I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, July 17th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America, in two great bodies, for Christian saints, what a nation under God, in this law, liberty and justice for all.
Sarah Erickson, will you take role, please?
Mary LaKind.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, before us, we have a consent agenda. Do we have any modifications to the agenda? No? Okay. We have a motion to accept the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Sarah Erickson.
Before we do this, do we want to go over the disclosures portion?
Oh, why not?
Just to make sure that there's none?
Yes, and I have to apologize. Our town attorney called. He's in a traffic jam on I-25. I think there was a wreck, and so he's going to be here. He said he thinks he'll be here 10 to 15 minutes late.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, disclosures of conflict of interest. Is there anybody on the council or otherwise that has any conflicts of interest they need to disclose? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the agenda. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mary LaKind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes 7-2-0, and I will learn how to read the agenda better next time. Next up, we have a presentation from Haley Chapin from TriLakes Cares.
Good evening, council members. Do you have a clipper or do you have the presentation? Send their presentation. Okay, we'll start without it. Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, I thought.
Do we not have it to present? Did you, who'd you send it to?
Like two weeks ago, and I'm currently on vacation, so my mind is not quite there in work mode. I don't remember, but they confirmed they received it.
It is, it's in your packet. Okay, give me a second. Do you want a copy of it?
That would be great.
I will give you a copy of your presentation. There you go. You bet. All right, so it's on page 19 of the packet.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and community members here. We appreciate the opportunity to give a little bit of an update on TriLakes Cares and our service to the community. One of the big things that happened this year was we did an update and change to our mission. So the first slide you can see is our new mission statement. For those of you that are in the audience or at home, since it's not up on the screen, I'll read some of the information. Our mission is empowering families and individuals to reach towards a better tomorrow. So our goal really in the community is to help folks who find themselves struggling, whether that's putting food on the table, keeping a roof over their head, providing their kids' school supplies needed for school, dealing with mental health issues, post-secondary education support, job placement, whatever that might be, and meet individuals where they are and help them reach for a better tomorrow so that we can all have a good, high quality of life in our community. The stats in our region, I've listed some information for the nation, for USA, and then some information for stats from our local community, so you can kind of see how we compare, and you can kind of see somehow we differ. There are some areas where we're extremely different than the federal numbers. In northern El Paso County, it's a little bit more affluent, so some of the numbers don't quite match the national numbers, so I wanted to put some of those in perspective for you. Slide three talks a little bit more about stats for the USA. One in seven families have children that are impacted by hunger, and so it's very important, not only for the adults and seniors in our community, but also for the kiddos, making sure that they have the food that they need on their plate. Most of the community knows us as a food pantry, but we do so much more than that, and I'll get into that further in our slides. That chart that's on the bottom of slide three goes to show you the federal income level for being considered below the poverty income guidelines. So a household of one needs to make $14,580 or less to be considered below the poverty line. I don't know a household of one anywhere that could make $15,000 and actually survive, pay their, just their living expenses. So what we felt years ago was that that was not a really good reflective of how our community might differ than a federal number. So we took the five zip codes that we serve, the average median income for those five zip codes, average those went 50% below, so think roughly the bottom quarter, and that is our income threshold for services at TriLakes Cares. So on slide four, you could see our primary service territory with the zip codes listed that we focus on serving, and then our income eligibility guidelines. For those of you that are here or at home, I don't know if I could read this, but a household of one for our income guidelines is $51,000 and change. That's a little bit better for somebody to have the chances of being able to survive well, but just think about your household size and whether or not you could afford to live in our community on $51,000. We have no public transportation. You would need to provide that for yourself. So there's a lot to take into consideration when you're looking at a federal number compared to a local number. We feel that our income eligibility guidelines are more reflective of our community. I'll also tell you, the households that we serve, typically, they are a lot lower than our income guideline threshold, but this accounts for a single-parent household here, or a police officer, or a teacher, who might be making an income similar to that and still supporting their family. There are two types of poverty in which we focus on serving, those that come from generational poverty, those that come from situational poverty. Generational poverty are those where multiple generations, parents, children, grandparents, all have resided in poverty, have been on food stamps and other government assistance. Situational poverty are those that maybe have no experience with government assistance and all of a sudden have a catastrophe to their family, whether it's loss of a job, medical issue, loss of a home, and then are thrust into needing social services. A lot harder, a lot easier to get someone whose situational poverty back on their feet. They know a lot of the hidden rules associated with living in middle class as opposed to someone who was raised in poverty, their parents were raised in poverty, and their grandparents raised in poverty. That's what they know. So we work with two different types of folks who come seek our assistance. In slide six, there are many reasons that people are able to leave poverty. I have a few of those listed there. Sometimes it's just reiteration constantly of the opportunities and the support from agencies like TriLakes Cares that actually help move somebody out of poverty. They say it takes someone, what, seven tries to quit smoking, or eight tries to leave a domestic violence situation. Similar with leaving poverty, it takes people multiple tries to actually leave, and so we're there to help them through that time. On slide seven.
It's on the screen.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so time. Here's some hidden rules associated with the difference between poverty, middle class, and wealth, just to kind of put it in perspective. There is often a misunderstanding of, why didn't you do it this way? You should have done that. Well, when you're coming from middle class, it's a lot easier to say than it might be to do if you're coming from a different space. So time is one of those things that can be seen three different ways. Go to slide eight. The next one is money. Often, people, this is, for folks, this is a very hard thing. Why don't you just save? Why don't you just stop drinking your rent money? Why don't you just open up a savings account? Some people don't even know how to do that. And so it's, it's important for us to have wraparound services to be able to provide that to the community, to really reach around them and help them understand what does it take to move from poverty class into middle class if they want to make that move. The next slide is food. Often, we go to restaurants, and if you're in the wealth class, you might ask, was it presented nicely on your plate? You'll see that at very fancy restaurants. Middle-class folks usually ask, did you like it? And folks in poverty are really concerned with, did you have enough to eat so that you're not hungry anymore? So one item, we can all look at very differently. So often, there are misunderstandings and confusion, especially by folks who are not in our industry and not trained to support people who are coming at situations in life with different viewpoints, and we pride ourselves in being able to do so. The next slide is clothing. We see people come in, and they might have brand-name designer clothes on, or a handbag, or a fancy phone, or a fancy car, driving up to the food pantry, and we wonder why. Here's a perfect example. Sometimes, people want to fit in. We have, one of our clients used to work at a legal, a legal aid, who was an assistant to the DA, and you can't dress like you came out from under a bridge when you have a good job and you're trying to get back on your feet. So sometimes, you do have to look like you fit in, and so sometimes choosing clothing that allows you to fit in with a different class is part of that process of fitting in. The next slide talks about living in the moment. Often, we find folks who come from generational poverty live in the moment. They can't see for the future. We asked this one client, how do you decide what bill to pay next? How do you decide what issue to take care of? And the client said to us, whatever balloon floats down next is the one I'll tend to. So instead of being proactive and planning like middle-class and wealth people do, they are living, living in the tyranny of the moment and dealing in a reactionary space, and that's not good for getting ahead in life. And so we work with folks to try to position them to be a little bit more forward-thinking. The next slide talks a little bit about our program areas. Again, a lot of people think that we're a food pantry, and we are, and that's usually the biggest thing that you can see. It takes up the biggest footprint in our building, but we do a lot more than food pantry. We will repair people's vehicles so that they have reliable transportation to get to and from work so they can provide for their family. We do a program called Stable. Councilmember Abbott was able to come to that graduation just a couple minutes ago, and I have a testimony of a participant of that program here with me to speak to you in just a moment. And so there's many other programs and support that we offer the community, and more that I could probably put that was listed up there. Next slide is our medical program, collaboration with Penrose St. Francis. We actually have a nurse on site that folks can come and see. Sometimes, it's expensive to have insurance, and once you have it, it's even more expensive to also use it. There's co-pays and deductibles you have to meet, and so we provide a free nurse to the community. Anybody could come in and see her. We also have a DME loan closet, durable medical equipment. So if anybody even in the community here this evening is interested in borrowing a wheelchair, crutches, bedside commode, a shower stool, a knee scooter, we have it to loan to the community, and you can borrow it from us from free. You don't have to be a client, you don't have to be low-income, but that's one of the services we offer to the community at large. Next slide is 14. Stable is our self-sufficiency program, Secrets to a Better Life. It's a program that is designed to work with folks who are really, have that desire to change their situation and reach for the better tomorrow, and really come alongside them in helping to craft their plan to move out of poverty into a better space. The next, the next slide is food programs. Here's a little picture of our newly remodeled market, and it's what people know us for the most. D38 does the food drives for us, the community does as well. Free grocery program that folks in the community, whether you meet those income thresholds or not, whether you live in our five zip codes or not, if you come and declare your food insecure and you need food, you will get food. So if anybody's listening and could use a little extra on their dinner plate, come see us. Next slide is, just shows you a little bit about some of our partnerships. We don't do it alone. We have a lot of community partners that are helping us provide the products and services to our community, and so we're very grateful for their support. The next slide shows you some impacts and outputs for fiscal year '22. So we're in our fiscal year '23, so this is our last closed year. Some stats about our organization and what we've been able to accomplish. When you're trying to judge a nonprofit to support, I ask that you consider more about what change are they making in your community, not how many butts are in the seat. I could tell you that we serve 755 households in our community, but unless I told you what kind of change we impacted, how many dogs did you feed? How many people did you feed? How many trees did you save? Whatever the organization is you're looking at, take it one step further and ask for what kind of change, what kind of impact did they have? The next slide talks about our outcomes, and that's what you should be really looking at. How well did the organization be a steward of the dollars that you provide, and what change did they make in people's lives? And so those are some outcomes for a couple of our different programs. We're super transparent with the community, and if you go to our website under our reports page, you can see our 990, our audit. All our information is transparent to the public to take a look at, and I'm happy to meet with anybody if they have any questions about it. The next slide shows a little bit about comparison for the pandemic. The first bar chart is fiscal '19 that had no impact of the pandemic. The second bar chart shows six-month worth of the pandemic hitting that fiscal year. The third chart was a full-year, full-blown pandemic, so you can see how the need for our services greatly increased, and that last fourth column is this last fiscal year. So you can see, we are still at elevated numbers compared to pre-pandemic levels. That pandemic hurt our clients, and I always say that our folks that we serve are the first to be impacted by any economic downturn, and they are the last to recover. They're still recovering. There's still help that's needed, and we are still looking for increased level of support to keep up with the need that's showing. Next slide, we do a little with, we do a lot with a little. So two charts there to show you a little bit about the services, goods and services we provided for clients, and, and then more specifically around the food program. How much did we pay for versus how much did we get donated? We really pride ourselves in getting a lot of donated products and services that allow our dollars to stretch even further to keep up with the increased need in the community. And so thank you to all of our donors out there and our volunteers and funders to help us make that happen. Next slide is a little bit about our volunteers. So we're looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested, they really put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to help us accomplish the great work that we do, and so we are reliant on them, so we are very appreciative of that. And then the last slide has my contact information if anybody's interested in connecting with me further, but as I wrap up, I want to invite up Gloria. Would you join me? Gloria is a graduate of our Stable program that just recently graduated, just a couple weeks ago, and also a resident of the Town of Monument, and I asked her to share a few words with her about her experiences with us.
Good evening. My name is Gloria. I am 68 years old, and I have been a client of TriLakes Cares since May 2022. I retired three years ago in California and moved to Monument where I was able to purchase my very first home, but being on a fixed income, I didn't anticipate inflation that happened unexpectedly, and I had a very difficult time being able to pay for everything, basically. And one day, when I hardly had any food and I was fearful and desperate, I ended up calling 211 and asked if there was any place I could get some food, and they referred me to TLC, where I was able to obtain groceries and so much more. It has been such a blessing to be able to go weekly, to be able to continue getting groceries, especially this past Thanksgiving and Christmas when they had wonderful holiday meals and gifts for us that were offered. And I was able to see how generous TLC donors are, and I, along with everybody else, are truly grateful. In April and May, I was fortunate to be able to attend the Stable classes that Haley just mentioned, and this program changed my life and outlook and a positive way. I learned how to manage my finances, and I set goals, which I'm happy to say that I am achieving, and I gained confidence in myself so that I was able to come and speak to you guys tonight. I am so thankful for all of TLC's support, and I want to encourage each of you to please give to this exceptional organization made up of dedicated staff and volunteers who are respectful, kind, and very helpful. I want, I am just one of many who are grateful to the Town of Monument for having TLC in it. Thank you so much for listening.
Takes a lot of courage to do that, to be vulnerable, to share that you are struggling to provide for yourself and your family, and so she, you spoke very well, very well. Great job. Thank you. And just to finish up, Carol and Kelly, would you mind joining me? Two of our board members are here and just wanted to share their thanks also for your support, and I will hand out a little goodie bag of information about us, our annual report and such, and we'd love to host you for a visit if we haven't yet, and of course, appreciate all the continued support.
Appreciate you've got a very full agenda tonight, so we'll make this quick, but we want to thank the council for all the support for TriLakes Cares and so that we can continue to support people like Gloria and have great stories like that.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time. We do know how busy y'all are, but being on the board and, and working with them as a volunteer, I see how TriLakes Cares brings the community together, and that is a really beautiful thing. We are very lucky to live in this town, and so we just really want to thank you so much for whatever support that you can, you guys can do. So, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Okay, before we get started on the next item, there's a clipboard that is going around. For those who wish to provide public testimony, please ensure that you sign it before you come up to speak when we get to that portion of the public hearing, and make sure that you state your name for the record. I will ask that all those that are providing testimony will continue to address the council and not members of the audience, and that everybody acts respectfully towards each other and our applicant. There is no reason for yelling and screaming or sidebar comments, things getting nasty. I don't want to see that. Okay? If it gets to that point, then we'll address it, and it may include you being asked to leave. Okay? Sorry? Public hearing rules? They'll get their time. We'll, we'll address them. What? Okay, so we have a combined public hearing, and Sheila, will you be addressing this?
Yes. Do you want both presentations up front, or do you want to do West, have public comment, then move to East? How would you prefer to have it done?
I think I'd like all the presentation up one, at once. I think that's how you did it with the Planning Commission.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's no reason to repeat anything that's redundant between the, the two items.
Correct.
So, and, and one more thing, for those of you who are giving comment, please make sure you tell us where you live, too, for the record. Okay. Ms. Booth, it's all yours.
Thank you. So we'll start with Monument Ridge Number One West, which is on the west side of I-25. Before you have the vicinity map showing the location, then we'll have the annexation plat. It's a little hard to read, but it gives you the information you need to show contiguity. So it's an annexation of I-25 up to the 25-acre parcel on the corner. Oh, sorry. This one shows, the red line shows the contiguity, the yellow line shows the actual parcel. So this is a request by Monument Ridge West LLC for annexation and initial zoning of property on the southwest corner of I-25 and County Line Road. It's known as Monument Ridge Number One. It would help if I put my glasses on so then I can read it. Proposed annexation of 90.60 acres. Originally, the annexation was 90.98 acres. However, El Paso County requested additional property for the right-of-way for Beacon Light Road at the intersection of County Line, so it dropped to 90.6 acres. The proposed zoning is residential attached, which is the RA Zone District. It's in, we have an associated conceptual plan that shows 230 dwelling units, which is comprised of 115 duplexes, two-family units. It also has highway buffering, birmingham, and trails around. In 2022, this property was submitted for annexation to the town. It also had an RA zoning, but also had a small section for CC, which is a commercial zoning. It was tabled by the Planning Commission November 9th of 2022, and then at the Board of Trustees Hearing on December 5th, it was tabled again, and the petitioner withdrew the application. They submitted the petition again for Monument Ridge West and East in March of this year. The annexation was referred to the Town Council on May 1st, 2023. Annexation initiated, and the public hearing date set by council on June 5th, and a public hearing is being held tonight, July 17th. So tonight, before you, we will be talking about the annexation, then we will go over zoning. We'll discuss the Planning Commission review and their recommendations, and then end with Town Council review and recommendations for motions. For the annexation, again, it's an annexation of 90 acres. 25 acres is the development area on the southwest corner. The remainder is the flagpole annexation of I-25, which is neutral. The flagpole establishes the required contiguity for the town. Contiguity is required by Colorado statutes, has a, this property has a perimeter of 24,948 feet. Once since one-sixth contiguity requirement would be 4,158 feet, they have provided 4,292 feet, so they do exceed the one-sixth contiguity requirement. They are proposing a metro district to fund improvements for the site. They are also requesting an initial zoning of residential attached. The next steps, should this be annexed and zoned, would be a preliminary and final plat to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Town Council, and then any site plan or construction documents would be reviewed administratively by staff. For the annexation review and approval criteria, you have, your Planning Commission has one set of review, and they are established by the Town of Monument bylaws. The Planning Commission is required to provide a review and recommendation on annexation applications per the Planning Commission bylaws. The Planning Commission shall review all proposed annexations to the Town of Monument and make recommendations to the Town Council as to whether or not the annexation complies with the comprehensive plan and whether the annexation generally is in the best interest of the Town of Monument. Part of the comprehensive plan is the three-mile plan. Property within three miles of the current town boundary are shown, and those highlighted are those that have been identified as ones that the town would like to move forward with. The urban growth area is the area that the Town of Monument has defined as appropriate for the location and development of land, consistent with the town's regulations and infrastructure requirements. The Monument Urban Growth Area represents lands of the town it's willing to consider for annexation within the next 10 years. Community concepts, look at the edges for annexation, and number two, consider contiguous area where there is a potential for non-residential development. The town will responsibly consider all petitions for annexation of lands within the urban growth area, and considerations shall include, but not be limited to, extension of one or more municipal services to the area would place an unreasonable economic burden on the existing users of such service, or upon the future residents or owners of property in the area itself. And number two, the proposed uses in the development agreement are generally inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan, or three, the application does not qualify for annexation based on Colorado revised statutes. The comprehensive plan shows this area's mixed use. The applicant is proposing residential. The applicant is proposing residential. Mixed use is a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. So I'm going, I'm not going to read all of these. I'm going to try to hit on the highlights. Many of you were here for the planning commission, and you heard me read through all of them, but I will try to get as much into the record as possible. Mixed-use development may include residential development in the mix and should address the physical and functional integration of uses through careful site layout and thoughtful design of buildings. Mixed-use development should promote work, live, and play, with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential, should have usable open lands and open spaces, live-work developments in the same building, professional office facilities that are not high-traffic generators, personal services such as barber shops, beauty shops, and health spas, medical facilities, groups of shops and services that share a single access point, lodging, convenience retail and restaurants, and public facilities, schools, libraries, and recreation. Attributes and characteristics: Development, particularly along the I-25 corridor, should preserve views to the west and include a landscape buffer along the highway to reduce noise and light into adjacent land uses. Centers should be served by controlled access onto arterial or collector streets. Development that strives to integrate two or more land uses, such as residential, commercial, and office. Housing should complement and be subordinate to the primary residential land uses. Developments that include a total cap on allowable square footage of non-residential uses and housing density that can be accommodated by the transportation network. Accommodates easy access to goods and services by foot or car. Emphasis is placed on the ability to walk or drive and park to access many complementary services. Small businesses that provide services and specialty retail establishments. Well-planned, attractive clusters or node, nodes of commercial development. Spacing between developments and structures is of a dimension or so screened with plant materials that the scale of the development complex complements the adjacent uses and character desired by citizens. Clustered onsite parking that is subordinate to the structure. Residential units that provide a transition between non-residential and single-family residential. Multifamily units that are no greater than four to six units per structure and that the address, and that address the demands and needs of the area workforce and senior citizens, and provide a greater choice in size and cost of housing for TriLakes citizens. Limit lighting to the minimum required along the interstate corridor. Community vision: New development should add to, not detract from, the quality of life and natural features cherished by citizens. Maintain a balance between developed land and natural amenities throughout the TriLakes area. Continue to develop and maintain a park and open space system that is linked together by a series of trails and sidewalks. Community values: The small-town feel, which creates a sense of community. The quality of life in the area, which includes the following attributes: Locations, views to the mountains, beauty, dark skies, and the natural environment. The school system, which is one of the primary reasons people move to the area. Many stated Monument is a great place to raise children. Citizen viewpoints: Citizens would like to see an interconnected trail system for both recreational users and those wishing to walk or bike to school on both sides of I-25. Citizens remain concerned about the views one sees from the I-25 corridor and views from the east side of I-25 towards the mountains. Citizens and area residents are mindful that a broader range of housing opportunities is important to the local economy. Many simply do not like multifamily housing. Goals, opportunities, and qualities. Policies: Land use opportunities: Capitalize on the three I-25 interchanges for destination sales tax-producing land uses. Encourage highway-oriented businesses to locate the mixed use and defined community centers with shared access. Land use policies: Encourage the use of sustainable development practices, including site planning techniques and new technologies, to ensure that views, vistas, dark skies, environmentally sensitive areas, and open lands are integrated into new developments. Encourage transitions between dissimilar land uses using increased setbacks, feather densities, landscape buffers, native plantings, berms, mutually agreed-upon traditional setbacks. Allow for a wider array of land use types to meet changing community needs. Transportation opportunities: Provide a system of interconnected walkways and trails from County Line Road on the east side to all school sites. Transportation policies: Reduce the adverse impacts of new transportation corridors by creating walkways, bikeways, and paths. Use drought-tolerant landscaping and berms and green street design to manage drainage and storm runoff. Cooperatively plan logical and economical road extensions and linkages. Encourage the development of separated walking and biking lanes. Parks, open space, trails, and tourism: Place greater emphasis on the dedication of logical pedestrian and bicycle trail connections as part of the subdivision process. Protect the legacy of unique natural features. Water and sewer: Employ strategies to acquire and enhance senior water rights, including annexation, purchase, adjudication of non-tributary water, and leverage of senior surface water rights. Policies: Correlate water demand to proposed land use when evaluating new large-scale developments and potential annexation areas. Economy: The development of Monument as a regional trade center was a focus of the 2003 comprehensive plan and has been achieved. The 2017 plan provides the opportunity to develop multi-use employment centers that can serve the growing front-range population through the designation of the business campus and mixed-use land use categories. The annexation review and approval criteria, again, was whether or not it complies with the comprehensive plan, and then whether or not the annexation is in the best interest of the Town of Monument. So compliance with the comprehensive plan. The property is shown as mixed use on the future land use plan. The proposed initial zoning of residential attached zone district is not in compliance with the future land use map. Staff, however, supports a deviation as the amount of commercial shown in this area is not easily justifiable due to the lack of housing to support it. No new development will occur on the north side of County Line Road in Douglas County as this is an open space conservation easement. Compliance with the comprehensive plan: Staff finds that the proposed annexation and zoning to be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. The town's three-mile plan identifies the area proposed as part of its proposed annexation area. The mixed-use land use designation does allow residential, including multifamily up to six units per structure. Careful site layout integrates a trail system with existing trees and usable lands for open space buffering. Dark sky lighting is to be utilized throughout the development. Complements adjacent residential with a transition of density and open space trails buffers towards the I-25 corridor edge. Addresses the housing demand and need of the area's workforce, providing a greater choice in the size and cost of housing for TriLakes citizens. The proposal meets a large variety of the advisory comprehensive plan's aspirational goals, opportunities, and policies. Is it in the interests of the town? By annexing the property into the town, the town will have oversight in the development. Town oversight can help ensure the community vision, community values, and viewpoints are all taken into consideration. We also looked at the potential costs and benefits to the town. The cost to the town regardless of annexation, that a police department entertains 561 additional calls per year if it's developed, requiring 3.8 additional police officers. The additional salary and benefit costs $382,000 annually. Benefits to the town if annexed: Potential additional sales tax, property tax, other impact fees of parks, school, drainage, and traffic. Water infrastructure impact fees, approximately $5.4 million, and tap fees, meter impact fees, and development fees. With the annexation came an annexation agreement, which is the agreement between the town and the developer. There was a conceptual plan submitted. It's been showing, it shows residential attached units and a trail around the boundary of the development. This is a conceptual drawing only, and the agreement contemplates future modifications, but does not allow any higher densities. Zoning: The petition proposed residential attached zoning, but has agreed to remove boarding and rooming house, manufactured house, and multifamily dwelling. That is also included in the agreement. Metropolitan District: The petition will be creating, the petitioner will be creating a district to fund infrastructure and for maintenance of parks, trails, and drainage facilities. Land dedications: The petitioner will provide fees in lieu, fees in lieu of land dedication for both parks and school. Plans and studies: There will be submitted subdivision plats, site plan applications for town review. Some of the studies include traffic, drainage, environmental studies, along with utility, wildfire mitigation, tree shrub preservation, and others. Roads: The petitioner will construct all required internal roadways. They may be required to upgrade Beaconlight Road from a rural to urban cross-section, and sidewalks will be installed on both Beaconlight Road and County Line Road. And just a reminder, Beaconlight Road is currently being upgraded by PPRTA funds through the county. They had anticipated starting that construction earlier this year, but in my latest conversation with them, they will not be starting it until fall or winter of this year. It will be a rural cross-section down to a certain point, and then become an urban cross-section to handle all the drainage from there south.
And also to add to that, we've agreed with the county that they're going to put a retaining wall at our tank site, and so they're not going to be trying to get, buy, purchase our land.
Lastly, in the annexation agreement and a part of our review, we looked at water supply and dedication. The petitioner has 61 annual acre-feet of water available, with approximately 86.25 acre-feet required to provide service to the property as proposed in the conceptual plan. The development of the property will be phased utilizing the available 61 acre-feet until the additional 25 acre-feet are needed, are provided. They can be purchased from the town or from other providers. Let's look at the zoning analysis now. So this is Section 1803-130, which is the zoning review and approval criteria. There are eight criteria by which we look at when we are looking if a zoning should be recommended for approval. The existing zoning in Douglas and El Paso County, so to the north in Douglas County is A1, it's a conservation easement. To the south is C1, El Paso County, it's vacant, single-family. To the east is commercial, community, commercial community and commercial service, and then to the west is rural residential five-acre. The proposed zoning residential attached allows, has these uses allowed. We have uses allowed by rights: Single-family detached, two-family, which many know as a duplex, religious assembly, open space, parks, ADU, which is an accessory dwelling unit, bed and breakfast. Conditional uses are assisted living facility or nursing home, childcare, community facility, schools, community recreation facilities, golf course, group home. Uses that were moved by the annexation agreement are manufactured housing, multifamily, boarding house. Planning Commission also recommended removal of bed and breakfast. This is the proposed conceptual plan based on the RA Zone District. 25 acres at 9.1 dwelling units per acre, 115 duplexes, which is 230 units. Amenities, improvements, and utilities: There will be a perimeter trail and open space, sidewalks along Beaconlight Road and County Line Road. Water would be from the Town of Monument, with the phase development until all the water required is provided. Sewer is monument sanitation, and there is no commercial. If they were to look to develop in El Paso County, under the C1 and CS Zone Districts currently in the county, no residential uses are allowed. They would be required to rezone in the county. Public notice: It was published in the Gazette, June 7th, posted on the property, June 12th, and then property owners within 500 feet were sent notice on May 30th. We have received letters of opposition and letters of support. They were all linked to in the documents on demand. Planning Commission at their meeting had the following to provide. So again, they were only to look at, does it comply with the comprehensive plan and whether the annexation is generally in the best interest of the Town of Monument? There was the first motion by Commissioner Egley. He made a motion to deny the annexation with Chair Trujillo seconding. The motion failed by a vote of three to four. A second motion was made to approve by Commissioner or Vice Chair Oars. The annexation with conditions, Commissioner Zernico seconded the motion. It was a motion to approve, subject to the following condition, that the annexation agreement include the removal of, from the zoning, the use of bed and breakfast, boarding houses, manufactured housing, and multifamily. Again, all of them, except the bed and breakfast, were already in there. That motion passed four to three. And then there was no, a note regarding the previous motion. Commissioner Needler asked Chair Trujillo what he would need to be, have his vote become a yes. Chair Trujillo stated that the zoning would need to be changed, and both clarified that the commission could vote to change the zoning within the next item. Ultimately, Chair Trujillo stated that he would have voted yes on the motion, but the commission didn't see, deem a reconsideration of that vote necessary because it had already passed. So that was the motion on the annexation. We then moved to the motion for the zoning. Chair Trujillo made a motion to approve a different zoning than that recommended by staff or that requested by the petitioner. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the large lot residential zone district for the area known as Monument Ridge Number One. That motion passed six to one with Commissioner Egley in opposition. For Town Council's review of the annexation, we go to the Colorado revised statutes, typically 3112101. Annexations are governed by CRS 3112101, commonly referred to as the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. Annexation can occur in three ways: Landowner petition, annexation election, or unilateral annexation of an enclave or municipality-owned land. In this case, we are looking at a landowner petition. The actual landowners must petition. The powers of attorney are listed, limited to five years. More than 50% of the landowners owning more than 50% of the area eligible for annexation may petition. Public streets are excluded from the total land area calculation of landowners. To be eligible, you must meet the contiguity requirements. At least one-sixth of the perimeter of the area must be contiguous, shares a border with the municipality. Contiguity is not affected by streets, rights-of-way, public lands, or bodies of water. However, streets are counted in calculating the perimeter of the annexation. Contiguity can occur by a series of annexations, which can be considered simultaneously. We are not doing that tonight. We are doing the next one, which is a flagpole annexation. It's used to describe when a street right-of-way is used as the pole to reach land not directly contiguous to the municipality. This requires a petition from the owner of the road if the road alone is being annexed. If the road, road is owned by CDOT, a petition is not provided by CDOT per Section 17 to 18 of the CDOT Right-of-Way Manual, which states, "Further, it is generally the policy of the department not to execute annexation petitions prepared by municipalities or private parties. If a platted street or alley is to be annexed, the entire width must be included." Community of interest: A community of interest must exist between the area to be annexed and the municipality. The urban area, the annexation area, is urban or will be urbanized and can be integrated into the municipality. No annexation shall occur that will result in the detachment of an area from a school district. And the three-mile rule: A municipality must have a plan in place for areas to be annexed that generally describes the location, character, and extent of transportation systems, public areas, public utilities, and more. This is typically acknowledged as the municipality's three-mile plan. The town adopted their three-mile plan earlier this year. No annexation may extend a municipality's boundary by more than three miles in any direction in any one year, and ours was adopted, as I said, in July. An exception to the three-mile limitation may be allowed if the three-mile limit would divide a parcel. That does not apply here. Abutting property owners are required to be notified by the petitioner, and that was done. The notice must be sent 90 days prior to the public hearing or upon submission of the petition, petition, which is later. Criteria for landowner petition: Annexation impact report at least 25 days prior to the public hearing, and annexation impact report must be prepared. At least 20 days before the public hearing, the annexation impact report must be filed with the Board of County Commissioners. The county commissioners did hear the annexation impact report last week. Reports are not required for annexations of 10 acres or less. Both the east and west are over 10 acres, so therefore the impact report was written and submitted to the Board of County Commissioners. Petitions shall be referred to the governing body by the municipal clerk. That was done May 1st. If the municipality finds the petition is substantially in compliance with the CRS requirements, notice of the hearing must be published and a public hearing held. We did do that with Resolution 38023, and the, it was approved on June 5th. The public hearing was noticed in the TriLakes Tribune on June 21st, 28th, July 5th, and July 12th. Has to be done four consecutive weeks, no more, not less than 30 days, nor more than 60 days. If at the public hearing, the municipality determines the general annexation criteria have been met, it may, but is not required to annex the property. The effective date of the annexation is based on when the plats are filed. The annexation is approved by the municipality. The annexation plat and ordinance are filed with the town clerk. Three certified copies are then provided to the county clerk and recorder. The county clerk and recorder then forwards those to the Division of Local Government and Colorado Department of Revenue. Once that is done, the annexation is effective upon the effective date of the annexation ordinance. So they go through all that process, and then it backdates to the day it was approved. Zoning and subdivision: Zoning or subdivision proceedings may begin anytime after a petition has been filed. However, nothing may be done prior to it being approved. Zoning must be completed within 90 days after the effective date of the annexation ordinance. Staff recommendation, and we looked at the annexation. We feel it's consistent with the 2023 the 2023 three-mile plan and annexation review considerations. Generally complies with the 2017 comprehensive plan, is in the interest of the Town of Monument, meets CRX annexation requirements, including contiguity, posting and public notice, property ownership, et cetera. Zoning, the residential attached, meets the Town's code regarding criteria two, traffic, parking and services. Three, changed characteristics. Four, community need and housing. Seven, adequate infrastructure. And generally with criteria six, conformance to the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the annexation based on the findings that the annexation is in general compliance with the comprehensive plan and is in the interest of the town. Staff recommends approval of zoning, saying that it complies with zoning criteria two, three, four, and seven. I can now move on to east, if you'd like.
Everybody ready for them to go on to east, or do you have any questions about west that, or can you hold them off until we've completed the entire?
I will in the next one.
Sorry? You want to break it up?
Okay. It would appear, excuse me. It would appear that several members would like to ask some questions, broke it, break it up. Are we going to have the applicant present anything, or are you doing it for them?
No, the applicant does have a presentation.
Is it separated? What's, what's this going to cause? It's for the whole thing? Okay. We, can we just move on then? Okay. Look, continue on then.
Sorry?
Continue on.
Okay, and I will not repeat all of the information if I don't have to. Unless you'd really just like to take a nap. All right. Monument Ridge East, this is on the east side of I-25 and south of County Line Road. Again, here is the annexation plat. The area, oh, I, go back up, sorry. So the area that is hatched on the left is the area that shows the contiguity. The important thing about Monument Ridge East is it cannot happen unless Monument Ridge West is annexed first. Monument Ridge West establishes the contiguity for Monument Ridge East. This is a request by Monument Ridge East LLC for annexation and initial zoning of property located on the southeast corner of I-25 and County Line Road, known as Monument Ridge, number two. This one as well. Has an associated concept plan with 383 dwelling units. On the west side of Misty Acres Boulevard, which is approximately 40.52 acres, they propose 122 duplex, 36 triplex, and 64 fourplex at 8.49 dwelling units per acre. On the east side of Misty Acres Boulevard, which is approximately 18.96 acres, they show 14 single-family homes, or single-family lots on 15,000 square foot lots, and 20,000 single-family, sorry, 23 single-family on 6,000 square foot lots. That would be 1.95 dwelling units per acre. Same history on this one. It was submitted last fall. Petitioner withdrew. They submitted, and we are here at our public hearing. Again, annexation, then zoning, Planning Commission, then Town Council. So annexation of 71 acres. The perimeter is 10,000, 014. The 1/6 contiguity requirement is 1,669. They provided 3,287. Monument Ridge West establishes the contiguity for Monument Ridge East. Again, the applicant is proposing a metro district, initial zoning of RA. Same next steps would be followed by plating, site planning, and construction drawings. Again, we're looking at whether it complies with the comprehensive plan, is in general best interest of the town. Same three-mile plan. This area is also included, and it's highlighted, so it meets the same criteria that we did look at for west. This one includes mixed use and the business campus, so I will not be going through the mixed use again, but I will touch on some of the attributes of the business campus. Mixed-use business park that allows for office, research, and development, and educational facilities, manufacturing, assembly and fabrication, commercial accommodations. Attributes and characteristics intended to provide a tax base and jobs while reducing traffic and commuting distances. Land use categories intended to provide an alternative to the I-25 planned industrial district. Unlike mixed use, residential is not allowed in the business campus. Structures should be appropriately scaled to the lot size and lot configuration. Structures shall ensure views to the west are preserved. Campuses should have one defined point of entry, and circulation is handled internally onsite. Community vision. These are also very similar. New development should add to, not detract from the quality of life. Maintain a balance between developed plans and natural amenities. Develop and maintain park and open space systems. Keep the small-town feel, quality of life, view of the mountains. Monument's a great place to raise children. These are the same citizen viewpoints I read to you, and these are the same goals and opportunities and policies for land use, transportation, all of the others. So again, we were looking at whether, with the Planning Commission, whether it complies with the comp plan and is in the best interest of the Town of Monument. So as with the west, the property is shown as mixed use and business campus on the future land use plan. The proposed initial zoning of residential attached zone district is not in conformance with the future land use map. However, staff supports a deviation as the amount of commercial shown in this area is not easily justifiable due to the lack of housing to support it. Noted development will occur on the north side of County Line Road in Douglas County, as this is an open space conservation easement. Existing properties to the east are low density, likely not to redevelop without annexation into the town for urban-sized lots, which would require municipal water, Woodmore Water and Sanitation serves this area. Compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds the proposed annexation and zoning to be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan because the Town's three-mile plan identifies the area proposed as part of its proposed annexation area. The mixed-use land use designation allows residential land uses, including multifamily up to six units per structure. Even though land uses proposed do not reflect business campus land use designation, the overall BC area on the future land use map is still available for future consideration. Careful site layout integrates a trail system with existing trees and usable lands for open space buffering, again, including dark sky lighting, complements adjacent residential with a transition of density and open space trails buffers, addresses the housing demand and need of the area workforce, and the proposal meets a large variety of the advisory comprehensive plan's aspirational goals, opportunities, and policies. We find it's in interest of the town. We'll have oversight in the development, and oversight will help ensure the community vision, community values, and viewpoints are taken into consideration. Benefits to the town. Mine just disappeared, sorry. Oh, here it is. Police department, 561 additional calls, again, 3.8 additional police officers, additional salary and benefit costs, 382,000 annually for the benefits to the town if annexed, sales tax, property tax, and other fees, including parks, schools, drainage, and traffic. Annexation agreement. We have the conceptual plan. Similar to the last one, we have the conceptual plan, the zoning, metropolitan districts, land dedication, plans, studies, and roads. The difference with this one is just the Misty Acres Boulevard versus Beacon Light. The zoning analysis, it's the same zoning development review criteria that we looked at with the last one. We found two, three, four, and seven. So this is the existing zoning in Douglas and El Paso County. So to the north, we have agricultural A1, which is the Douglas County property. To the south, we have commercial center, rural residential five acre. To the east, we have residential suburban, 20,000 square foot minimum, and rural residential five acre. To the west is commercial C1 and the recreational vehicle park zoning. The existing zoning with this one includes PUD, which is the Misty Acres Planned Unit Development. This is a development that's already included or already approved within the county. It allows a mix of housing types, 358 total dwelling units on 124.4 acres. It includes patio homes, apartments, condominiums, and townhomes. For single-family, it's 62 units at two dwelling units per acre, 75 units at 2.5 dwelling units per acre. For multifamily, you have 50 units at four to six dwelling units per acre, and 185 units at eight to 11 dwelling units per acre. The original PUD included commercial uses, but it looks like those were removed with the most recent update. So this is how it could be developed in the county today without any changes in the zoning. The proposed RA, this is the same uses that we saw on the last discussion. Yeah, so these, it's the same ones were removed. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Is the multifamily that we have allowed, doesn't have a cavern attached.
Right. Okay. So there are some, this is the same RA as the other side, so it looks like there's a change to the multifamily on this one. The proposed conceptual plan based on the RA zoning, this is what was submitted. So it's 59.48 acres with 6.44 dwelling units per acre. On the west side of Misty Acres, you have 122 two-family units, 36 threeplex, and 64 fourplex at 8.49 dwelling units per acre. On the east side, 1.95 dwelling units per acre, made up of 14 single-family units on 15,000 square foot lots, and 23 single-family units on 6,000 square foot lots. The amenities include a perimeter trail and open space. There's no commercial. There's a proposed roundabout at County Line and Misty Acres intersection, and this would be served by Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. Again, the El Paso County zoning of C1, which is commercial, CC, CS, those are all three different commercial zones. They do not allow residential, but the PUD does. So if they were to look at developing any of the areas zoned as commercial, they would have to go through the rezoning process in the county. This is the conceptual plan that is up here. You will see the higher density on the west side of the Misty Acres Boulevard, and then the single-family, larger lots on the east side. Public notice is the same as the last one. Planning Commission review. So again, they looked at whether it was a comprehensive, complied with the comprehensive plan and in the best interest. There was a motion to approve. That passed six to one, subject to the following condition, that the annexation agreement include the removal of, from the zoning. And they recommended approval of a different zone district. They moved, again, to the large lot residential zone district. That motion passed six to one as well. Town Council review. It's the same criteria for the Colorado statutes. So they meet the landowner petition. They meet the eligibility based on contiguity. They meet all of the community of interest, urban area, school district, and three-mile rule. They also did the abutting property owner notifications. They meet the annexation impact report. Again, that was done and forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. We have done all the actions on the petition. We've referred them to, the clerk has referred them. We sent them to the Town Council to establish the public hearing. We are here tonight to discuss. And again, the same on the effective date of the annexation. So our recommendation is approval of the annexation. We recommend approval of the RA zone district, and we are here to have questions, but the applicant does have their presentation as well.
Okay, before we move on, Drew, Jim can't see the presentation any longer. Are you still sharing? Present, well, you just shared?
It's on screen.
Okay, Jim can't see it. And for those who are online, have their hands raised, please put them down. We're not going to be getting to anybody until we get to the public hearing portion. They were? They were not changing online. Okay. Drew, you want to take a minute to figure that out?
Okay. So do we have any questions before we get to?
Slide 30, and explain that.
The Misty Acres.
Yeah.
Sheila, that's to you. Can you go to slide 30?
The Misty Acres piece?
Existing zoning in El Paso County. Misty Acres PUD.
You're not sharing. Hold on, we're going to get this shared.
It's back. Thank you.
Is this the slide? Okay.
Okay, so my question on, on the Misty Acres PUD, is this, has this already been submitted to the county, or is this a conceptual plan from this developer for the, for the Misty Acres?
This has already been submitted and approved by the county. It's been on their books for years.
Okay. The, the overlap, call it the Venn diagram piece, between the, the red and the black. Is, I guess I'm confused about that piece. Is that piece then being taken out of the, the county plan, or what, what's the intent here? I'm not.
Yeah, they, once they annex into the town, the Misty Acres PUD no longer applies to that property. It would fall onto the RA zone district here.
Okay. So the numbers, okay. So the, the numbers for the Misty Acres PUD assumes no annexation, correct?
Correct.
Monument, okay. So then, if annexed, then go back one, or 32, go to 32, sorry. Okay, so then, these numbers, based on the RA zoning, are, would supersede what's been presented to the county, correct?
Yes. So the conceptual plan that was submitted would, yes, that would replace what's in the county.
The, the PUD essentially goes away.
Correct.
Or only the portion that's overlapping?
That's being annexed in.
Got it. Okay, all right. So the numbers, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
So, so just to add to that, just so we're all on the same page. So when you're looking at this pink diagram on the bottom left, that's the section. Okay. That's part of that PUD. If they went to the county right now, that section is zoned eight to 11 units per acre. Some of it, some of it is commercial, although I'm hearing rumors that that might be removed. I didn't see any documents that it is removed, but that's where that piece of it is right now.
Okay.
If I'm understanding correctly, is that correct, Sheila?
Okay.
So you made a statement to say the commercial was removed. Do we have a document to say that it was?
The information the county sent to me that I went through did not show any commercial, and that was the latest that they gave me.
Okay. Any other questions from the council before we have the applicant?
So what, for El Paso County, you said CCC1, CS and RS 2000, or C5, I'm sorry. Which one in El Paso County no long, is no longer applicable?
C1 is the obsolete zone district. At one time, they would allow you to still develop under that. My understanding is now the C1 has to be rezoned, but.
And quick question on, on the, on this slide as well. So on the north, it's, it's, is it vacant, undeveloped, or is it county-owned open land?
It has a conservation easement on it.
Okay, so it's not going to get developed?
Correct.
In any way.
I believe it's a 99-year.
Yeah, 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 north on the Douglas County, okay.
Okay, any other questions before we have the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The, okay, so the costs on the, on the police numbers, is that cumulative, or is that per, per zone?
That was based on the projected increase in the population.
So, yeah, sorry, it's a both.
Cumulative?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, at the risk of kicking over yet another hornet's nest, it's, you mentioned that there's going to be a metro district. There's going to be a, a single metro district per east and west, or a single one to rule them all? Or a single one to rule them all? What, what's, what's the plan?
I believe it's one, but I can let the applicant
Okay.
weigh in on that.
Okay, thank you.
The service plan is in the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was
Right.
concerned.
Think there's, think there's four.
Yeah, and, and that was my concern is that there it looks like to be four metro districts as opposed to one with four sub-districts.
We're, we're, um, we, we should hold that off until we get to discussing the service plan.
Copy.
Here's, okay, anybody else? Okay, the applicant has a presentation. Um, before you speak, I would just like to make a comment. Um, it has been said a, a lot online. There was a lot of questions asking why we brought you back. And I take full one hundred percent responsibility for making the request to have the applicant come back to speak to the new council members before they submitted their application. Um, so that if there's anybody else online that's got an issue with that, you can take it up with me. My phone number is published. But it made sense that given the fact that they were going to be developing right next to the town, that they, the new council would have an opportunity to speak with them before anything was presented and give them an opportunity to, to show us what they had. So, thank you for meeting with all the council members prior to putting any of the application paperwork in. I, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and my name is Ray O'Sullivan. I'm a consultant for the applicant and council members. Thanks for your time tonight. Um, we've been through several hearings as you are, I'm sure are aware. And um, David Whitehead is going to be giving a more technical presentation, but um, just in the private meetings that we've had with the neighbors and also in the public hearings that we've had, the, uh, uh, kind of an overriding uh, concern of the, of the constituents is why are we here? And, and how did this occur? So I, I wanted to take a moment just tonight to give some context because I think that we didn't articulate well how we ended up in front of the planning commission for the second time and, and for the first time, in fact. So what happened is uh, this is, and Mr. Larson bought the property, uh, knowing that it was in the county and also that it had current zoning on it. You saw the three hundred and fifty-eight units on the, on the east side in the current PUD and the commercial zoning on the west side. And the west side required that they seek water service from uh, the Monument municipality. And so they arranged a meeting with the, with Monument Water. And when we came to the meeting, there were also uh, members of staff for the town of Monument. And as you've seen in, in Sheila's presentation a couple of times, these properties are in the target area for annexation for the town of Monument. So when we thought we were generally having a meeting about water, they said, would you consider annexing in to the town of Monument as uh, you saw on that, that slide that you had him bring up? He said that you're gonna have to provide uh, three or four or five police officers, whether the property is annexed or not, just because of the reciprocal agreements where you're providing fire and water services and all that and not being the beneficiary of any taxes or tap fees and that type of thing. So we looked at that, uh, having plans to go to the county. And we followed that up with a meeting with uh, your planning staff at the time. I, I think it was Megan, if you guys remember her, and um, so they walked us through um, what the annexation might look like and what the uh, potential zoning was. And we actually asked if they would consider a PUD at the time because it allows the developer to kind of write their own zoning. And the, the staff said that the Monument had undergone a, a rather rigorous process of determining, determining new zoning criteria and really weren't interested in us trying to recreate the wheel. And so we looked at that zoning criteria. We uh, modified our plans and submittals. And after a lot of work on everybody's part, the staff, all of our uh, engineers, plant planners, consultants, all the different things you have to do for um, you know, water quality and also there was some uh, wetlands areas that we had the Corps of Engineers that had to make a, a determination on. So these things take a lot of time, energy and money. And at the guidance of staff, we felt like we were making a petition that was consistent with what the town of Monument was trying to achieve with some, with some uh, negotiation there because as was pointed out, there's a conservation easement on the private property to the north. There's a huge uh, open space dedicated all the way to Castle Rock on, on the west. And so most commercial enterprises would not entertain going there. There are some distribution centers and things like that that we could have looked at. So um, we really focused on the residential side. There was a potential on the west side to do some commercial. Uh, Mavericks or one of the big gas station companies was interested but could not work out the um, the logistics for traffic with uh, with CDOT because CDOT controls so many feet either side of the freeway. So, having said all that, um, we uh, showed up the planning commission hearing in November and really uh, rather startling ran into a buzzsaw and did not get of, of, an, a good reception from the, the community at that meeting or nor the planning commissioners for that matter. And uh, planning commissioners and even council people were online and in the audience and, and uh, very, you know, vehemently opposed to the project. And we thought, well, this, I mean, we have zoning in the county. We know the county staff well and we've done a lot of projects in the county and we thought, okay, we're not, we're not welcome here. This is bottom line. And so um, people think that we used, uh, going to the county is a threat or something, but the reality is that zoning already exists. And so um, but there were a lot of synergies coming into the town of Monument and we were excited about it, but uh, we just decided at that moment in November, they didn't even give us a vote. That we were at the, at the meeting for several hours and they, and they just decided to table the process. And it was a new transition of new um, council people, et cetera. We weren't going to be able to get back on the agenda for a couple of months. And we decided that uh, that, you know, the people had spoken and we weren't really welcome here. And so we went back to the county, started the process over in the county. And in um, in March or so, um, staff reached out to us and thank you for saying, uh, Mayor Lakine, that uh, that you reached out, I think directly to the, the ownership and said, listen, we'd like to make a deal and work out something with you as it relates to um, developing this property. Um, we were, were brighter reasons, all the reasons that we originally thought when we were, we thought we were invited to uh, petition and annex to the city and, and zone, et cetera. Um, we were asked to come back and try it again. Well, if you think the reception was bad in November, um, when we, we showed up of, of five or six weeks ago. And um, and just so you know that these things aren't done without a lot of thought, energy, money, planning. Um, if you look at the, the plan on the east side of the freeway, uh, we've got lots that generally match the property um, to the east, back up to their backyards. And then across from there, the, the single-family lots are a little smaller, but still for, for nice homes. And then there's that um, waterway kind of open space. And then there's the main road and the densities that we're seeking, uh, consistent with the county densities, maybe uh, similar, I think, all in, all total a little bit less. They're up against the freeway. So we were thinking in our mind that this is a transitional use and not really going to have a tremendous effect on, on, on anybody. Um, people have a different opinion, you'll hear tonight. Um, and so we, we tried to present this project in good conscience and with the guidance of staff and the goals of the town of Monument. And so that's why we're here in front of you tonight. And um, as it relates to the west side, I just want to say that um, that is a, a higher density, single-family attached. They're duplexes, we call them, but the, the units can be sold individually on either side. We plan to create, and again, that's against the freeway. We print, plan to create a nice berm around the property. There's a lot of trees there. We want to replant the trees along the berm and create a nice environment and entry features and things like that. And so, you know, our goal is to do something that, that uh, people love and want to live at and uh, not to make a, a project that's a nicer. Not gonna make everybody happy, but that's the position, petition in front of you tonight. Um, I know the, the planning commission did support the annexation. Um, but when it came to the zoning, um, I, they voted to make the project two and a half acre lots. I've never, I've never seen that in my career where we petition one kind of a zoning and then they, they vote to zone it. I, I, I don't think that is on the agenda tonight. I don't think that's being recognized. Uh, I know it's an advisory board, but um, you know, the zoning we're seeking is the RA zoning as the town has, has uh, has written and subject, subjected us to that scrutiny. I just want to make sure that I'm not uh, I'm not missing anything, but um, uh, we, we feel we, we've uh, done our best job trying to present this project and, and ask for your consideration in the annexation. Um, but the property has been acquired and uh, we do plan to develop it on some basis uh, going forward. And I guess the question before uh, council tonight really is, do you want it to be developed in the, in the city and, and try to work together, uh, you know, as good neighbors and mutually or uh, are, are you gonna uh, banish us to the county basically and we'll, we'll try our luck there. And we'd probably go with the existing zoning to some greater lesser extent. And then uh, we, we do have an agreement for sewer from Monument on the west side and um, water is gonna be a, a challenge on the west side if we don't, uh, if we don't get annexed here, just uh, cards face up. So um, if any questions to me, I'm happy to answer them. And then also David's gonna make a more technical presentation. We want to recognize that the staff um, did a very thorough presentation and we won't try to be too redundant as it relates to that, so. No questions? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm gonna change my mind and not do a full-blown presentation. As Ray just indicated, staff has done a very good job. We've worked hand in hand with them over and over through the details. The last three or four days have been almost never-ending. Jeff has been wonderful um, to work with and the staff. The sewer on the west side, just a couple of quick notes. We are officially annexed into the Monument sanitation district. That happened uh, towards the end of last year. The water on the west side, there is a deficiency there. The review letter identified three different ways or a combination of three ways to make up for that deficiency. And we've agreed in writing uh, to work with the second one, which is to purchase the uh, water that we need for deficiency. Once we really know what that deficiency is. I mean, we believe through the state's water tool that there's sixty-one acre feet of water under the property. We know what the water demand is for the town. We had conversation with staff about how they go about that. Identified the deficiency um, based on the density that's presented today. If the density changes, the water demand changes. So when, if and when we need water to make up a deficiency, we'll purchase it from the town of Monument. That's the plan that we have today with staff. Um, and uh, with, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have about any of the presentation or what our thoughts are about any of the things that you've been presented tonight.
Quick, okay.
Yeah, quick question on, on the water deficiency. Is that driven, and this is for staff or for you, sir? Is that driven more by the fact that right now it's conceptual, so you versus you, you have a you, you have a firm number of how many units you're gonna build and that drives the SFE or?
Well, so the town plans point three seven five acre feet of water per dwelling unit
Okay.
on a single-family
Roger.
attached. Not single-family standalone, but in the ta, attached. So if you take that amount of water per year annual usage per unit at two hundred and thirty units, as it sits today with the plan, worst-case plan, then that generates about eighty-five acre feet of water. We have sixty-one according to the Colorado Water Resources online tool.
Right.
That will have to be refined at some point. It might end up being less. It might end up being a little bit more.
Okay.
Whatever it is, we're giving it to the town of Monument as part of the annexation. And then based on what we actually end up with as a density at point three seven five acre feet, that'll determine the um, deficiency, the delta.
Yep.
And we've agreed to buy, and there's a specific rate determined right now um, per acre feet to buy the difference.
Okay.
Whatever that difference might end up being.
Okay, thank you very much.
And our water engineers looked at this and approved it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Um, ask a question.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to ask one question and then I'll come back to other questions later. I'll, I'm gonna let other people talk, but um, on slide twenty-six, I'd like to get the, I'd like to talk about the elephant in the room for me right now. And that has to do with the benefits.
West or east? Which present, west or east?
Uh, west.
West.
Yeah.
Can we keep the slides at the ready? Please.
Twenty-six. First off, I've, I've never seen a presentation that had a potential benefit to the town that had to do with revenue. Um, and although I do have some issues with the calculations with the, the additional police just because of Woodmore and Glen Eagle and Forest Lakes and other places that are outside of the town. I'm not even gonna talk about that right now, but what I do want to talk about is this five point four million dollars in tap fees and other fees that we will get from this project at the expense of giving up a source of water for the town of Monument potentially because we're all groundwater on the west side of town and we have two options to get renewable water. And one of them is a northern delivery system, which is almost complete. And the other one is the loop system, which is a future um, potential um, dream at this point, because we don't have much more than that. And it might be the best system. But because of the northern delivery system, we cannot allow any water to go north of the divide. And this property is north of the divide. So um, the five point four million dollars isn't the benefit if the loop system ends up costing another thirty or forty million dollars at some future date. And for us to give up that for twenty-five acres doesn't seem to be in the best interest of the town. So um, however, if somebody can answer those questions, there's not really a question, it's a statement, but to be more clear on that because I don't think we can afford to do that at this point. If, if there's any comments from staff, I would, I would listen, but that's the way I'm seeing it right now.
Tom, do you, do you mind if, if I give up my unqualified opinion and, and then you can smack me down?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I, so that's, it's a very good point. Um, it's an excellent point. Um, that this property is above in division one, right? When we're division, is it flipped? Or division two or?
I, I believe we're in division two, yes.
We're division two and they're, they're division one for, for water. Um, however, the, to me, um, a, as a layman, this five point four million, to me, I see it, um, and I, I do see it as a benefit because that gives us um, an influx that allows us um, to purchase renewable water, um, which is not cheap. Um, and it's not gonna get any cheaper, uh, the longer we wait. Um, and, and most people that know me know that this is my hobby horse, that I, I love to beat to death. Um, and then some. So this five point four million to me, um, as a layman, um, and sitting on the council, to me, that, that's a that's a, a rev, a potential revenue that allows us to set it aside to purchase a, as well as uh, with um, is it two-way money? To purchase renewable water that we can um, offset uh, the fact that this is in division one. Uh, we can use it to exchange. Um, so it, it, to me, I see it as options. Um, as opposed to if we, let's say that we don't annex it, we still need renewable water and we still need to somehow generate funds, middle levy override, some other way to still get renewable water um, into the town. So this is a really uh, potential, forgive me, windfall, um, that allows us um, to set it aside for future renewable water um, purchase.
But we don't have any renewable water. We don't have any pipe to get renewable water
Absolutely.
to the town of Monument.
Absolutely, but Triview has been very generous in offering the NDS. Um, and so this five point four million could also provide um, an, an avenue um, to allow us access into the NDS. Um, and so you use the NDS to provide renewable water um, to division two and then allows us to tap, to solely. and then allows us to tap, to solely use groundwater for Division One.
That's the problem that I have right there, is solely using groundwater.
But the, the who's, and Tom, this is where I need you to, to set me, set me straight. El Paso, not El Paso, CSU has said in the past that there's the potential that some smaller parts of Division One might be available to be serviced by certain Division Two water. But we have to ask and, and go through that.
I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I'm hearing potential and might.
I, I get it, but it starts with a fund. If you don't have the fund, you're dead in the water. Well, Tom, set me straight.
All right, so what I can add to that conversation is the water that you're talking about for this subdivision is gonna, would, would be supplied by the town of Monument, plus the additional water that the developer would have to buy to make the difference up. As long as that water is indoor plumbing, which majority of it is, it returns back to the sewer system and is accounted for at the discharge of the wastewater plant. And that's how we, we use a term called augmentation to replace the water. The water that's on the outside, on the irrigation supply, is the part that you worry about that drains to the South Plate River Basin. The geological divide at the top, which is just north of our tank, where all these houses are going to go in, anything that hits the ground, in theory, drains to the South Plate River Basin in Division One. So I'm more concerned about how we're going to account for the irrigation that makes it to the ground than I am the indoor, the indoor plumbing. The, um, the analysis done by our consultants also classifies two of the aquifers as, as a, is what they call non-tributary. All that really means is that there's a development fee to be determined once we know more data. And that development fee will pay for the town to present a water court case to adjudicate the water underneath the land. But that, that'll come later on as part of the process during an annexation. That's typically a amount that's determined based on the amount of acre feet. So I don't know if that helps clear it up and try not to get too technical on you, but that answer your question?
Well, it answers the question, but it doesn't provide a concrete solution for 25 acres of land that we might be putting ourselves in, in a giant hole. And that's my concern with, with hooking up to the town of Monument water, anything north of the divide until all these issues are worked out. I'm just getting that out there for right now.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for the applicant or town staff? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing.
Hold on, I got lots of questions.
Wait, so these are questions directly for either town staff or the applicant related to the presentations?
Yes.
Okay.
I was gonna just let everybody else take a shot at it because probably other people have the same questions as me.
Well, it's up to you. Either we can move on to having testimony provided and quite comments, or you can, you can wait till the end if you want.
Well, no, let's just ask questions if nobody has any, you guys got questions? All right. I'd like to talk about the trees. These are both heavily treed sites, particularly the one on the west. The potential site plans that I see, which if that's a worst case scenario, is still a scenario. The annexation agreement says a majority of those trees will be salvaged or transplanted, which I'm really having a hard time seeing where they would go since this whole entire site is covered. I guess there's probably, if you do some estimations, there's somewhere 10 to 12 or 15,000 trees on there, which means five to six or 7,000 trees need to be relocated. And to get to a majority, and I don't see how you can possibly do that. If, if we, if we approve this as is, the implication is that you have the permission to cut these trees down. And with RA zoning, that would be an administrative feature. So I'd like the applicant to speak to how are you going to save that many trees? And what is your plan? Because your annexation agreement says a majority of the trees.
If you read the wildfire mitigation plan, one of the things that's required is thinning. And that happens whether there's a development or not, to reduce the wildfire threat across these properties and into the neighbors. There's also a disease portion that will address some of the trees in this development, both sides. And I agree with Steve that there are more trees on the west side than there are on the east side. But the health of the trees and the safety of the, of the, of the community from a wildfire point of view, and this has come from the fire department, is not something I'm making up, that we're going to have to address. The remainder of the trees, we're, we've committed to nurseries, to spade trees, we've committed to give trees to the town for parks and pick them up and spade them and move them. If you look at, and I don't know if my, my PowerPoint up there, the, the renderings, yes. They'll be moved into where part of the berms are going to be on the west side. We've been asked by staff and worked with them to create buffers around. And a lot of the trees will get, get moved to buffers. There'll be open spaces that they'll get to be moved to. There's a rendering there. Which one is that? That's looking north along I-25. On the east side, there's the photograph in the upper right-hand corner. You're standing on Monument Hill Road, looking north. And the wildlife fence that CDOT just put in is still there. But Monument Hill Road ultimately would go away along here. The pavement would be torn up, there'd be a berm established. And a lot of those trees would be relocated along that area to create the screening that the town has asked for in our conversations with staff. The buffer, this is also an area where there would be a trail, which has also been discussed with staff. And there's a lot of detail to work out after the annexation. As Sheila has mentioned, in terms of preliminary plats and final plats, there's a lot of detail to work out. Jeff, can you give me the next one? Okay, this is looking south. Whoop, um, the middle one there, Jeff. Can you back up? Okay, so this is Misty Acres Boulevard, looking back south. Whoop.
You keep losing me.
Hey, so the, the parkway stays, there's sidewalks. So pedestrian and bicycle ways were mentioned in Sheila's report about being separated from throughways. And Steve, I know I'm moving a little bit away from the specific question, but the trees along the parkway and the open spaces will be nurseryed during construction and then, and placed into the open spaces and the common areas and, and so on. And then on the last one, Jeff, the last slide, is looking south. There it is, that's Beacon Light Road, looking south. The larger lots on the east side of the roadway, the development on the west side with the buffer and a lot of the trees. This still represents what El Paso County and PPRTA are doing for Beacon Light Road improvements. But there's three things to address. Diseases, wildfire mitigation, and then planting and replanting and relocation and gift to the town of Monument for parks.
Okay, thanks. There's still a tremendous amount of trees and the, in the annexation agreement says that a majority of them are going to be removed. And that's kind of where I'm, I'm, I'm seeing a bit of a disconnect just because there's so many trees on, on that side. Our majority is going to be salvaged or transplanted. Right. But the majority, I mean, who determines what the majority is? So on the, Sheila, I have the question for you. In our RA zone district, it says that the intent is a purpose. The purpose of the residential attached zone district is to provide a mix of housing options, including single family, uh, single family attached and multifamily residential dwelling units, which multi, multifamily in this case means five or less, I suppose. But yet on the west side, there is no mix. So how is that? How is that compliant to the RA zone district?
It doesn't specify that they have to be one or the other. It can be a mix or it can be just all one. They're all allowed uses within that district.
Right, but the purpose is, out of the code, it says the purpose is a mix of housing options.
And it can be that you look at the RA as not just being on the west side, being on the east side, it could be the combination of the two. It could be the lots that are around it. It's just to provide for a mix so that you can have that flexibility.
Okay. And, and once again, when we, when we look at this, when we look at whether or not that this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the term is conformance, it's not general compliance in our code. And obviously, there's several things in here that have been missed as far as whether or not it's in, in conformance or not. I mean, just the future land use maps, take it out of conformance by your own admission. And, and I would agree that there is probably not a lot of use for commercial space up here. But the El Paso County Master Plan calls for a suburban zone district, which is predominantly single-family homes with the use of some attached and some multifamily, but that is a, a small use according to their plan and also calls this area an area of minimal change. Before this was submitted, when we had our meetings, I wrote a couple pages of, of what I thought that people could live with in this area that was 100% in compliance with the El Paso County Master Plan. So that if it did end up there, we could show a good faith effort for that. But it was predominantly single-family with the R-20,000 zone district staying intact since that is a zone district that abuts dough wood and the, um, the people bought those houses over there with the expectation that that would remain as is. I also suggested that as many trees as could be saved would be saved and that if there was any multifamily, it would go into those other areas that are less treed. On the west side, there was no plan at that time, but there is no transition from five acre lots to, I mean, this, in this case, it's a transition from five acre lots to, to a pretty heavy density of duplexes where, where it should be more, on that side, more like an R-20,000. That would be compliant with El Paso County's master plan. So I, I don't understand why we would be suggesting anything more dense than what they would require us to do. So can you comment on that, Sheila?
A lot of it has to come down to economies of scale. The county with theirs and ours with extending infrastructure, it doesn't make sense financially even for us to maintain that type of infrastructure with larger lots, with the amount it's going to cost to even get them there.
Would, would you agree that if this goes to El Paso County? And I've heard a lot of people say things like, oh, they're worried about distribution centers and things like that getting put on, on the east side and heavy commercial and other things. CDOT would not permit distribution centers, that's for sure. Heavy commercial, there's probably not a market for that. So if this goes to El Paso County, you would probably agree that it's going to go through a PUD there, correct?
They would probably stay with, the Misty Acres PUD would stay in place. They would develop under that, but the others would most likely be a PUD. CDOT can't deny a use. What they can require are improvements to the roadways and access. But if a distribution center wanted to go there, they would have to mitigate that with their traffic improvements, but CDOT wouldn't be able to deny them.
Well, it's not zoned for distribution.
Right, I'm just saying, to answer that part about the CDOT denying a distribution. Anything that would be allowed by right in the zone districts that are currently in place, they're going to require some trans, some improvements to Misty Acres, to County Line, maybe even the intersection with the interstate, depending on what they are.
Okay. This just seems like the best use for everyone is, is a PUD and not a straight zone district like this because the straight zone district has got conceptual plans that even in the annexation agreement, doesn't say anything about maintaining those 15,000 square foot lots over on the eastern side of this. Everything just becomes administrative after this point. And then it becomes, well, we, we, we're dealing with a consultant now, since we don't have our planning director any longer, and it goes outside of the town. It, it seems to me like a PUD would be happening in El Paso County and probably should be happening in Monument. And I think a lot of people have been saying that for a long time. I know the planning staff didn't take that position, but I know the planning commission did. And I know I have over the last, you know, 10 months or however long this has been going around. And I know that's not what the applicant wants to hear, but I think being consistent with what El Paso County would want, if, if there is a chance that water gets hooked up to, to the west side and the west side hooking up, why I just have, I have a real big issue with giving up, giving up a system that we don't have a commitment yet that we can drain anything into the Division One. So I guess that's a statement, not a question. But I'll let, I'll let some others chime in here.
Senator, or? Anybody else on the council have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. For the applicant, are you willing to reduce the amount of dwellings on the east and west side of the proposal?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you for being honest. So one of my concerns, as always, is the quality of life to include safety, the roads and the accessibility with the increased number of units, just the traffic overall throughout the year. And then in addition to the school year for Palmer Lake High School, with those few areas to navigate to get to and from, also access to I-25. I mean, there's talk about a roundabout, correct? In the one area on the east side?
Yes, it's a possibility.
So it's not, it's not a confirmed, okay? So can you talk about the, any road improvement in these, in this area then?
With all of the internal infrastructure has to be constructed by this development, extension of Misty Acres Boulevard up to County Line Road.
You say extension to, to go up to County Line Road?
Up to County Line Road, can you put that?
It doesn't exist today.
I know, I kept on getting there.
So Misty Acres Boulevard stops and it will be extended in its cross section. And there was a rendering also that I showed all the way up to the County Line Road intersection where Monument Hill Road intersects today.
How many lanes?
It's at least one lane each direction with a wide shoulder and a raised median. It's the same cross section as exists, exists today with the exception that our section has curb and gutter. With the exception that our section has curb and gutter and sidewalk and so on to help us with controlling the drainage, erosion control and ditches on the shoulder and so on that the county is not currently taking care of. Um, can you go to the next slide, Jeff? Okay, so you can see, there you go. You can see Misty Acres go all the way up the right hand end of the drawing as, as a proposed roundabout. Um, there are technical concerns with the size of a roundabout working correctly there. Cause I can't touch the land north of County Line Road. It's in a conservation easement, can't touch it. So everything has to fit within the confines of what's there today. It can't go further west, C dot won't let it. And they're saying that's plenty close. And they actually gave us a little bit of relief on that. Cause when they did the northbound off ramp with the new bridge, they moved that off ramp east a little bit. But in our pre-application meeting with the county, which had C dot, which had El Paso County, which had Douglas County Public Works people, they all agreed that that's the right location for the intersection. If I go further east with that intersection, I start to impinge upon the wetlands, which we've agreed not to touch in any way. We're not going to permit any kind of disturbance, go to the core for a permit on any kind of that. Uh, there will be with the roundabout, there'll be turn lanes that don't exist today. The county line will get widened so that there's easier access into the roundabout. If a roundabout gets built, if not, it might be a stop controlled intersection. At worst case, it could be a signalized intersection, right? Now, nobody seems to be in favor of a signalized intersection with the conversations that we've had. But in the end, that might be the best answer. So turn lanes, um, stop signs, stop controlled with the cross sections, all of those kinds of things. We're not doing anything on County Line Road. And Beacon Light Road on the west side because of the PPR TA project, which is lowering the intersection, adding turn lanes, paving the roadways, creating shoulders and in drainage improvements. And if we touch any of that, it kills the project. Annexing was specifically exclusive of Beacon Light and County Line Road for that purpose. Cause if we annex, it kills the project because Monument's not part of PPR TA.
I would like to just have you for a second. Think about the statement you made about the density.
About the what?
The density. This is, I think I've heard it someplace say this is the worst case scenario.
Yes.
And it doesn't sound like you're flexible based on the previous statement on the densities. So I'd like you to rethink the, um, one of the benefits. I think that the, the town and the people who would be moving into these developments should have access to public parks. There is zero room, especially on the west side, that's been taken into consideration. Any kind of park that could be utilized for the people who actually live there. The east side showed some detention ponds. Um, I assume those are not functional. We have other developers in town who have made their ponds functional so that they could be used by the public. And so before we get to the point where you have a hard line in the sand about the density, um, I will tell you that for me, the in lieu of fee for the park, I won't. That's a non-starter for me. The people who live there need to have someplace that they can go instead of having to get in their car and travel down to Limbach or, or another park someplace else. Um, I know that my development has several parks that were built into it. And you have ample room to create parks if you reduce the density. That, that is a benefit to not just the future residents of this community, but to the town also. So if you're not flexible with the densities and you can't give an actual amenity to the people, that's a concern for me.
Mr. Mayor, my statement didn't preclude parks and open space and trails, which are all in this plan. And this is a conceptual plan. We have made commitments to parks and open space. There's a significant open space between the back of the single family lots and Misty Acres Boulevard that will have amenities in it. But this is initial zoning and an initial annexation. And we have more detailed plans to do. We have to lay out parks, we have to lay out open space.
Well, hang, hang on, in the presentation, staff said you were providing fees in lieu of parks, correct? So that means you're not planning parks. You're planning to give the town money in lieu of parks.
For that, but that doesn't mean that there isn't open space.
I want them functional and amenity to.
I haven't said we're not doing functional parks.
You've got wetlands there, you've got wetlands and a pond. Hey, hang on, hang on, hang on, stop, stop.
And I, I don't have any problem with making the ponds functional by any stretch. But.
So then, okay, so thank you, thank you. So if it reduces the density, you can, you can live with that, right? Thank you. But stop, that's, it's not your turn. It's not your turn. Yes.
But, um, what size was, is a, a park that would qualify for dedication instead of paying fees? Do you know the answer?
I don't, that would have to come from town staff. My point is in this particular case.
The annexation agreement then.
I understand.
For that, and we can accommodate that and we'll work with the staff to understand the answer to Ray's question about what, what the land dedication needs to be to offset.
Sure, and, and, and my point is, is in this case, I don't want your money. I, I want the people who live there to have something that they can, thank you.
And Mayor, I want, I want a direction from the council. When you're talking about parks, you're talking about parks that they maintain, not that the town.
The HOA would maintain, or the metro district that they would be putting together would maintain.
Definitely, thank you.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a minimum size to qualify for a park or?
I'm, I'm sure that, yeah, I'm sure that.
Senator, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the, the whatever's on the screen. So the proposed roundabout for, let's hypothetically say these residents live here and there is an emergency. If they didn't take the roundabout or that was like a stopping, a stoppage point, where is the other, is there another map that shows another exit point that they could take? What would that be? It is missed.
All the way down by the high school.
So they'd have to take that.
Or they can come up through the other neighborhood and out Doewood. You, there's other streets they can travel.
Yeah, can you come back to the mic, please?
Yeah.
So Misty Acres exists down to Monument Hill Road down by the high school. That's the other end. What's that?
The Monument Hill is the one.
Monument Hill Road.
Twenty-five.
Yes.
But you said that was going away, correct?
Monument Hill Road up north where the trailer park is, the RV park.
Uh huh.
And north of there, it will go away.
Okay.
The RVs at north of.
Hang on, we, we will get, could you hold that comment, please? So it could be addressed and then responded to, because they're going to take notes of all the questions. And then you'll be able to come back up and answer them. Okay, all right.
So one way would be the roundabout, the other way would be further south.
And there are always the opportunities to move through the neighborhoods and get out. I mean, not in.
To twenty-five, that's, I'm talking about, let's say they had to make, to jet to the freeway. They would have.
Well, right now, the people in that, in that area that come out on Misty Acres Boulevard in the, as in the Misty Acres, they have to go south.
Okay.
Or they can go up and come out on Doewood to County Line Road and then west out to the highway.
Okay, um, I'd like to just let, uh, council member Romanello, who's online. He's been pretty quiet and probably because he can't get a word in edgewise, but.
No, I'm just enjoy, I'm enjoying the show. It's okay, just keep going.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
So I, I have one more question on this east side with the pertaining to the wetlands. So the U S Fish and Wildlife map shows the wetlands considerably bigger than what you're showing on here. And it also shows that the Misty Acres has been realigned. Um, the current alignment goes into some of these duplex units that are to the west of Misty Acres. And there's an old house and there's some very big trees around that house. And this realignment goes right through that grove of fig trees and also goes through the wetlands. And some of these houses are built on the wetlands on the U S Fish and Wildlife map. So how did these, how did these wetlands show up? And isn't there a way to route Misty Acres around that grove of which looks like old growth? Conifers. To not have to tear out all those, because this map that I see pretty much shows every tree getting taken out. I don't know how you save any trees, quite frankly. So can you, can you speak to the, the wetlands and the realignment of the road?
The home that's there today is abandoned. And it's, and it's going away. And the wetlands map that you're looking at has been modified with work through a deficient wildlife department and the Corps of Engineers. We hired a biologist and went with the corps out there and surveyed all the wetlands and got a new determination of what the wetlands extent are in, on that piece of property. And we have a letter from the Corps of Engineers saying that they're regulatory wetlands. So that means by the fact that they have, um, regulatory control over them. If we touch them, we need to get permit. So the mapping, the, the extent of the wetlands you see there on our plan is a reflection of the mapping that was done and approved by the Corps of Engineers about a year ago, year and a half ago.
Okay, so how about the realignment?
The shifting of Misty Acres Boulevard does a couple of things. And the alignment of, of Misty Acres Boulevard addresses a couple of things. The classification of the roadway has minimum design criteria and radiuses, including vertical alignment and site distances. And when we aligned Misty Acres Boulevard, we needed to move it to the east so that when we get down to the roundabout, the grades coming downhill off of the property down to the intersection meet the design criteria. So it's being driven by design criteria for the most part because of the roadway classification. We could do a lesser roadway classification and reduce horizontal and vertical curve radiuses. But that starts to reduce the size of the roadway, which we've already talked about in terms of traffic capacity and safety. So a smaller road cross section is not appropriate in our opinion.
Okay, I understand. So just it goes through a grove of trees and I'm just, again, you know, you've heard my concern on these, on these trees. And there's just doesn't seem to be anything left by the time you're done. Thank you.
Okay, um, before we, we're going to move on to the public comment portion of this. Before we do, we're going to take a quick 10 minute break. Uh, I've been, I've had it requested. People need to take a 10 minute break. So, uh, drink water, right? Uh, we'll be back at and yeah, eight forty-five.
Good idea.
All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to order. If everybody can settle down. Okay, so listen, this is how we're going to do the, the public comment. We've got a lot of people online that they want to have their say. So, we're going to do 10 people off the list. If you've all remembered where you're on the list, you've signed in. And then we're going to rotate over to online. We're going to go back and forth until we are able to knock everybody out. No, they're, they're fine. Just make sure your name's signed in on the board if you didn't do it. The other thing is, again, you'll be speaking to the council, not to people in the, the audience. If you've got questions for the applicant, please make sure you speak them loud enough so that they can write them down. I know that you're sitting right up front. So, I would get your pen out. That way, they can answer your questions when everybody has had their turn, all right? And let's just continue to be respectful, please. So, if there's people in the room that would like to provide testimony, whether for or against, feel free to form a line and, and be ready. Apparently.
The answer is no.
Well, I'm Larry Wyora. I've got an interest in this because I am west of Beacon Light.
Excuse me, please. Got to be able to hear them.
Start over. My name is Larry Wyora. I live west in Colorado states, which is west of Beacon Light Road. And which definitely is going to be of some concern here with this development. Anyway, in the planning commission, I talked a little bit about driving from Castle Rock, seeing all the beautiful mountains and coming down and over Monument Hill and all of a sudden seeing this concrete structure, especially on the west side. I don't want to go into detail about that. But I also finished it with talking a little bit about that atrocity that's being built in front of the high density of housing in front of Walmart, which I think was just an atrocity. We, do we really want to relocate that and put it on top of the Monument Hill now? I guess that's the question I have. And I think we really got to think about this. You know, there's got to be, I'm not against development, but there's got to be some kind of compromise between what I see in front of Walmart, high density housing, and something that may be more reasonable for the top of Monument Hill. And I think we need to look at that in some detail. The other thing I want to emphasize, especially in the west side, this is an island over there. And you're jamming in 250 houses, basically, or duplexes. We get all kinds of kids, hundreds, probably a few hundred kids, they're estimating, that are going to flood this area. And I like Steve's idea here, King's idea of having a park. I'm not sure I stopped there. You know, when I talk about making Monument Hill look like California, I think it's going to be worse than that because most of the California developments now are only requiring parks. They're looking at maybe a basketball court, a baseball field. Also, in the winter, these guys are going to need to go to some type of house to run into all these kids. Where are they going to go to? They're going to flood all the existing five acres there and move into all those roads and the lands around there. They have no place to go. They're going to go down, down to the town of Monument and, you know, walk all that way down on this little sidewalk and then come back up to 500 or 600 feet in elevation. You know, that doesn't make sense to me. I don't think that's going to happen. They need places to play around there and just one little park. I'm glad Steve mentioned it. I'm not sure it's even going to be enough. The other thing I wanted to mention is this whole clear cutting of the trees for this development. Is that the, the new fire zone now? Let's, let's turn Monument back to the way it was in the late 1800s and the early 1900s where the railroads took all the trees down from around here. It's so clear cutting is a good thing now for fire protection. I think we thin out some trees. I don't see a whole bunch, a lot of diseased trees up there. I don't have them on my lots or anybody around me. So, I'm not exactly sure what he's talking about. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to the pictures that he had up here. They're little six-foot scrawny trees. These are 50-foot plus trees on top of here. At the planning commission development time, the developer here mentioned that they're going to move these trees to a park so I can drive to park to see trees. Now, that's not why I moved to Monument. I moved to Monument to see these trees and see some of the beauty that is in here. And I want to keep a lot of that, not to go to a park where they're going to move a 50-foot tree to a park. I like to see him do that. The other thing I don't understand at all is we, we talked to planning commission a lot about rezoning this at 2.5 acres. I'm not hearing a whole lot of talk. I've been hearing either they don't go for it. It's got to be super high density housing. There's got to be something in, in the between this. And talking about the zoning also, you know, the developer here bought this with, especially on the west side, with commercial zoning rules. And they were very upset because they can't, there aren't any houses on the north side of County Line Road. And that does not help them from a commercial standpoint, support commercial products there. So, we need to change the zoning requirements to meet their benefits so they can make money. I'm not sure why we need to do that. And I guess that's my concern. Why are we so concerned about developer making money? So, we have to change the commercial zoning laws on the west side so that they can make money. And, and the way we do that is to give them super high density housing. I don't understand that whole concept from there. Anyway, I'm just against, I, I don't have any problem with, you know, making some changes to zoning or having some building. They've got land, but I think we need to do it in a place that keeps Monument not looking like California, but looking like the top of Monument Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm here for the east side. Which I'll be the one affected more than anybody here. I can guarantee it. I own the RV park on the east side. RV park's been part of this community since 1963. And everybody forgets about me. Used to be a time all the businesses were supported by me. Not so much anymore. Safeway's here. All these people are here now. But I've been here. As he nonchalantly said, oh, Monument Hill Road's going to be gone. How the hell are they going to get to my park now? They just blowing Monument Hill Road off? Are they going to go through a neighborhood? Have you seen how bad a driver these RVs are? Badging truck drivers without a license. That's what we got. We got people with 100-foot long rigs with all their crap they're dragging behind it with no training whatsoever. So, if they plan on putting a roundabout, it better be big. And there's better be big roads that they got to travel down so they don't run over children on the streets. And then my next big thing is multifamily brings crime. He has to admit to it. Multifamily areas bring crime. I work with development. I love Misty Acres. I bought a house there. And it backs right up to me. I worked with them the whole time and the inconvenience of it. I don't mind growth. But don't forget I'm there and don't forget that side is all about me and I got to deal with whatever he throws in the ground. And the crime is huge. Just the houses that are there cause me grief. I can't imagine multifamily being right next to me. The crime I'm going to deal with. And the fences I'm going to have to put up. Right now, we're open. We're beautiful. We got trees. But not anymore. I'm going to have to put more fences that I already deal with. Fake foot up. So, Richard B. So, remember that as they're throwing all that in. And I don't mind some growth. I love growth. I've made money on Monument Growth. I've developed several neighborhoods. So, that doesn't bother me. If there wasn't growth in Monument, most of you wouldn't be here. I've been here since 1988 when none of this was here. This was a field. Safeway wasn't here. So, and I didn't mind that. I love Safeway. I love Walmart. Greatest thing Monument ever got is Walmart and Home Depot. So, but that's all I have. Just don't forget I'm over there.
I'm Teresa Sidebotham. I own the law firm, Telyus Law, that's in the building on the top of Monument Hill. And my husband and I are abutting owners of the, the property. Our, so our property would be right next to the development on the, the east side. So, I wanted just to comment briefly about some of the stakeholders and the impact that it would have. You know, we've been dealing with the empty land. We're tired of having mattresses and couches and televisions dumped on the land along with other trash. So, empty land in an urban area has its own problems. We don't see it as idyllic open space. We see it as constant work project for my husband. Monument itself, of course, is a stakeholder. If the land is annexed and we have the, the attached residences, the duplexes, there'll be a pretty heavy tax base. The two and a half acre lots would not provide much of a tax base for the town of Monument. And since the developer's not really willing to do that, they wouldn't get any tax base because it would go to El Paso County. Little bit of a comment on the two and a half acre lots. We should think about the people who would buy houses on two and a half acre lot. Now, we're in that building, the law firm. It's a nice building. It's right on the highway. It's way too noisy for a residence. It's one reason we developed it commercial instead. The people whom I've met in my life who buy houses on two and a half acre lots do not choose to do it right next to a noisy highway. They go to places like King's Deer and Black Forest. So, I don't think that that proposal is going to be particularly attractive to them. El Paso County would love it if you either rejected the annexation or went with two and a half acre lots, which would have the same effect because their density is at least as much. And honestly, I'm not sure they're not going to go to apartments. Their traffic study from a year ago was for apartment buildings. And they suggested to us that we put up apartments on our land. That would be the highest and best use. Apparently, they don't like our law firm building. The people on the other side of Misty Acres, of course, want the lowest density possible. And I understand that, but I think the, the proposal for the attached units might actually be the lowest density that's practical on a common sense basis. And then I want to finish up by talking about the people who would be living in the attached residences. Because these are people that we want in the town. Right now, millennials and younger having a terrible time buying into the housing market. It's objectively much more difficult than it was when I was young. So, who are we talking about? We're talking about people with young families who want to get into the school district, people trying to get their first home, maybe retired people who don't have a whole lot of money. These are people who are the backbone of America. These would be great people to have in Monument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa and I are married. We live at 18245 Noel Boulevard in Woodmore. And we own the Arana Group, which is the property owner for the nine acres around the law firm building. They're at the, off of Monument Hill between Monument Hill Road and Misty Acres. So, we abut against this proposed plan. And I believe that balancing all the concerns, I mean, they, if you look at the interstate exits all the way from Falcon heading north, I mean, you go, there's the Academy Boulevard. There's North Gate. There's Interquest Parkway. There's Baptist Road. There's Exit 161. These highway intersections next to the interstate, I mean, that's prime development, real estate. And you see what's going in there. And if you want to maintain a gateway to Monument that's low density, that is highest and best use of this land, I think the residential attached is a good way to go. Because if we delay development later, that land gets more and more valuable and higher and higher density, things are going to be going in there. And I can tell you, because I did an ERD with the county last year about how to develop my nine acres, and they suggested that I put apartments on that land. They're really, really pushing for really high densities in there because it's so close to the highway. I mean, the, the Misty Acres, when it's completed, is going to be a great way for people to get in and out of the. I mean, it's already designed down by the high school to accommodate pretty high traffic. But when it gets punched through, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be developed. It's right there by the highway. And it's, and I, I really think that the RA at zoning is probably the best that you're going to get. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Sparks. I live at 20250 Doe Drive. Good evening. My name is Chris Sparks. I live at 20250 Doewood Drive. And yes, our property abuts the property that's being discussed here. And we've lived there for a little over eight years. When we were looking at this house, there was a big tractor trailer sitting on that piece of land with a big for sale sign on it. And it wasn't referring to the tractor trailer. It was referring to the land. So in response, Mr. King, I would be naive to think that something was not going to happen on that land. Of course, we wish it wouldn't. We've got a beautiful view over the freeway of the mountains. But again, I just think it was inevitable that something was going to happen. Now, should this be the town of Monument that hasn't input into this or the state? I really want you to have input into what goes on there. As has been mentioned, the developer has met with us, has met with our HOA. And their plan gives consideration to our piece of property. They have larger lots against our property line and that progresses down to the high density against the freeway. That will actually be a noise barrier for us. So I welcome that. So again, I'd like you to have consideration in this. I attended the planning meeting and actually I was dismayed by the proposal of two and a half acre lots. I just thought that was absolutely ludicrous. It wasn't even discussed and I'm sure it's not in any of the law to plant, excuse me. Yes, emotional. But so I'm in favor of the plans that have been presented here. I'm in favor of the town of Monument having oversight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Mitch and Mayor Pro Tem Steve, I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak with all of you and council members here today and this evening. Again, my name is James Verlaire. I actually live on the west side in Wakanda Hills. And I really, especially Steve, appreciate some of the specific points that you've brought up regarding water rights and trees. You know, as I was sitting down here, I was looking at the sign behind you. And I think, man, that's an especially beautiful emblem for monument. I thought, you know, when I come back from the north anywhere and I come to monument, yeah, I have this vision. We're coming home, coming home to monument. And it's something, a place of beauty. It's a place of aesthetic beauty. So the very notion that we would knock down all these trees in that corridor. I mean, I don't know how you can consider something like that, quite frankly. That is just a travesty. Have we really given thought to the noise, right? We say we want to promote, we want to bring in lower income folks into this area. We absolutely do. We need to make provisions for it, make room for it. But what services? Now, I work for an energy provider and I know all about services. But what services are there for these people there in that area? You're going to build a trail to where? You're going to build sidewalks to where? To the high school? Or are you going to build sidewalks all the way down to 105 so that they can get their basic services? Whether they want to go to Wanderman, whether they want to get their hair done, whether they want to get groceries. All of that are 600 residences competing for that intersection, right? You've got eight lanes of single traffic trying to go into a traffic circle. All right. Because you've brought Misty Acres party, you've brought the Monument Hill Road into one location to get access, the Palmer Divide Road. This doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's a traffic nightmare. It's a sound barrier issue if you knock down all those trees, not only for the people on the east, but on people on the west as well. That's a natural sound barrier that stops a lot of traffic. I formerly lived in Woodland Park. I lived right on the top of Bluebird Hill. And I tell you, listening to all those cars gun their engines to get up that hill, that is one of the noisiest parts of the I-25 corridor. When everybody nails it to get to the top of the crest of Palmer Divide, that's a lot of noise. And you're going to take away tremendous sound insulation in that corridor. So I'd really respectfully ask you to think about what kind of density you want there, number one. And number two, what are you doing from a water perspective? What are you doing from a natural sound barrier perspective? You shouldn't be taking down those trees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Michael Barber. I live six miles east of the proposed project on County Line Road. I've lived there for 23 years. I've been a practicing architect for 50 years and have served on several local, regional and national design review commissions and committees over that period of time. I'm primarily reacting to the two conceptual plans that were submitted, the worst case plans that were submitted for the zoning approval. I attended the planning commission on the 28th for the hearing of the annexation and zoning entitlements. There was meaningful public opposition, in particular to the proposed zoning and the proposed densities. Each site, east and west, have substantial character, natural beauty and visibility. The west side is generally densely treed with high ground. The east side is more open but treed, a watershed, wetland area, a basin feeding the large pond to the north. The two proposed concept plans I viewed at planning commission on the 28th are neither sensitive to the inherent natural character of each of the sites, nor recognize the strategic importance of their location and the visibility of those sites. Although I don't have a definitive opinion about the proposed annexation, I strongly recommend that the proposed density and concepts not be approved. Monument Hill is a landmark in Colorado. The location serves as a gateway entry to Monument, El Paso County and Southern Colorado. These proposed high density developments immediately south of the Douglas County open space in the conservation land would be at a very abrupt and inappropriate transition and introduction to Southern Colorado. The two concept plans I viewed are simply two dimensional diagrams to achieve maximum possible density. They ignore the site specifics, the quality of life amenities that would be necessary for that kind of density and once in a lifetime location opportunity for the extraordinary location on I-25. Questions concerning the full pack of the full impact of the proposed development were not fully answered at the planning commission. Issues with water, crime, schools, and how in the world at this, what I call blind spot rich intersection, the new C dot bridge, the 25 and County Line Road, how would that handle the traffic? The future use and development of these sites requires a much broader vision, perhaps a PUD, a much broader vision, more specific beyond what is being offered. It should be given further consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Kapazinski, 18865 Spring Valley Road in Wakanda Hills, resident for 27 years. I did some rough calculations of population increase based on the number of units combined west and east, 700 units, give or take. If you have two and a half people living in each of those units, that's 1,750 people. That would be added to the population. 300 students, as it was stated in the annexation proposal, be added to the schools. And for one vehicle per unit, that's 700 extra vehicles that would be traveling on those roads. Given that, this proposed housing density is untenable based for our given, with the stress it would put on our existing infrastructure, long-term water supply, as Mr. King said, increase in crime noise and pollution, increase in the number of students in schools already stressed and already at or over capacity, increased traffic on roads. We already see the increase in traffic on and the traffic impacts on Jackson Creek with all the apartments, townhomes and building that's going on there. So it was stated at the planning commission meeting a few weeks ago, but it bears repeating. We, you are not responsible for the risk that the applicants have on this land. With all this construction and the development going on in Jackson Creek with the apartments adding more to that, with the increase, you can see the impact, the incremental impact that it's going to have on traffic as you're going through town. So the applicants know this. They know about these developments going on in Jackson Creek. They know about this, all the new population increase and the traffic problems that are going to be, excuse me, had with this increase. So given that, I think that their development density plan should have been more carefully considered giving, given all this increased development in monument. And therefore, because it's arguing to be a challenge to absorb the Jackson Creek impacts and all the traffic and everything that goes around that water, all the things that everybody's concerned about, that we need to balance that with a lower density plan, perhaps not two and a half acre because that is not going to be tenable for them. But we need to really reconsider that. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Fred Darling. I live on Upper Beacon Light Road, the dirt part, right across from where this development is going to go in. One of my biggest concerns with all this, I listened to all these speakers. I could be wrong, but I don't think a single one is a resident of the town of Monument. We're all disenfranchised. We couldn't vote for you. And what is different about this plan, normally when people are against an annexation, they don't want to be annexed. In this case, we don't want this to go through. If it does go through, we're still disenfranchised. We have no say. One thing that hasn't been mentioned that I think about a lot is property value. Why do people move up to that, the properties off of County Line Road? Space, nice houses, nice lots, privacy. You pay a premium for that when you buy that. Now I'm going to have a sea of duplexes across the street if this goes through. What do you think's going to happen? I'm estimating a six-figure loss to my property value. That's what you're voting on, taking money right out of my pocket. Okay, that's part of my retirement plan. Okay? And also, as has been mentioned, roughly 1,700 more residents, crimes going up, right? More people, more crime. Can't prevent that. I spoke with the chief during the break about his calculations on the Jackson Creek, how using best guesses, how many more officers are they going to need? What's it going to cost? And we see that going on again here. However, my problem is regardless of what the crime figures are for monument as a whole. If you take a very micro view, that neighborhood right up there at the top of the hill, crime's going to increase exponentially up there. And then guess who's going to find out about it? The insurance companies. And my insurance is going to go up even more. Here's some more money out of my pocket based on your decision. Okay? So my biggest complaint on this again is the fact we are not able to take true part in town of monument politics. I thank you for the opportunity to speak here, however, and even if all this gets rammed down our throats, we're still excluded. So that's what you're deciding on here. I also like to comment on the means of annexation. I think it's rather preposterous. I don't, although it meets the legal letter of the law as described, I don't think it really meets the letter of the law as intended. It does have a carve out for flag type annexations. Typically, the road or whatever connecting is going to have houses that also get annexed, businesses that get connected, annexed along there, not just a road. I asked the chief on the break, so I've got on my side, the west side, 233, no, 230 more residences over there. And there's a home breaking going on. The monument police call gets called 911. They got to send somebody. Which way are they going to go? Beacon Light Road, of course. They're not going to use monuments road, I-25, because that's inconvenient. They're going to use the county road to get up there. I think it just helps point the preposterousness of this type of annexation. I can also talk about, some of the other speakers made great comments about transitions. As Mayor Pro Tem King pointed out, zero transition on my side. Five acre lots, duplexes. That's not a transition. And then on the other side, we're all talking about kind of east to west. But as the architect stated, what about north, south? Beautiful open space Douglas County, and then it's, you know, all development. Why don't we put neon lights in too? Okay. Because that's what it's going to look like as you go from nothing to all this development right at the county line, kind of like Wyoming fireworks stands, right? As soon as you get over the border. And so lastly, you know, I think it's really time to put the brakes on this. We have this huge development going up over off Jackson Creek. The apartments are already well underway. There's all the other stuff. They're working on the dirt and all that. Maybe you should see how it goes for a little bit. Because you could go ahead and approve this thing and everything starts going in force. And you find out, wow, we didn't plan that great over there, you know, and it's going to cost a lot more money than we thought it would. But now you're stuck if you annex this now and the plans are going underway. So I would urge you not to. The trees on that lot across from me, very healthy. They're actually spread out very well because they're nice round trees. They're not like the trees in Woodmore or some of the trees on my lot where they're all stuffed together and they impinge on each other. Beautiful trees. The ones that are dying are just some that probably got a little too much of the road stuff from the snowplows in the winter time right next to the road. But you go into that field, those are some beautiful trees over there. And I do reject the arguments that, well, if we don't do this, the county will. Once again, we pointed out those pesky details of geography and topography, right? We're on the north side of the divide. Who's going to come in there and build an apartment unless monument facilitates it by offering sewer services? Otherwise, there's no real way for any developer to put any kind of density in up there. So in closing, I would just say, if there's anything, well, on my side of the highway, I say it should stay how it is. So those office five acre lots, if people want to buy and put a house on them, fine. But high density duplexes? No, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Drew, you can start moving people up that are online. And we're going to get some people that have been waiting online. Okay? Okay. Jay Wenchel? You can unmute and speak?
Hello, I'm just on here because I have some concerns about this. This is a complete waste of time. It should not be touched. We have a beautiful view up here on Old Allen's Way. And we're going to see all these houses? Come on, really? That's human greed. You were taking away homes from wildlife. Wildlife lives there. And you want to take it away by putting houses in, houses? I'm like, how would you feel if your house was taken away from you? The place that you lived in for God knows how long and you take it away from, and you have it taken away from you. And then you want to go ahead and put human greed in there. That's human greed. It's happening all over the place. It is not going. It is so frustrating to see this view get taken away when we moved here in 2014. That's why we moved here. Because this, it needs to be fully denied. That needs to be turned into a preserve. So no building can be built there whatsoever. It should not be touched. It should leave the way, leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next one, Drew? Candace, you can unmute and speak?
Hello, thank you. My name is Candace Pollak. I live at 20240 Doewood Drive. Our property butts up to the east side Monument Ridge 2, proposed annexation. So first I'd like to state that I am super disappointed that no presentation was made on the applicant's part. It makes it really hard to visualize, understand and bring a full picture when they just default to what the staff has presented from monument. when they just default to what the staff has presented from Monument, the town of Monument. I moved from Highland Ranch three years ago to Monument because my children are USA weightlifters. We moved here because we wanted more land and we understood the small-town feel that Monument provided. So moving from a master plan community to Monument has been a blessing. We truly love our small-town feel of Monument. I'm going to point to the Fourth of July parade that just happened a few weeks ago where we had a huge influx of people come to enjoy our small town. I'm going to guesstimate that there were between 10 and 20,000 people who came in to our town. That is a really good illustration of what it feels like to have our town expanded by all these new residents moving in. There was traffic, there was trash, there was a ton of extra work provided by the police, all the things for one day. So when I think about this long-term, I really feel like this is a, it's just overly dramatic and the amount of housing that they want to put on this land. One of the things that was stated tonight was how we would divert traffic, which was onto our street specifically, Dewa Drive. So when we first moved here, Monument Hill Road had some construction work on, going on. And just the school traffic alone to go to Palmer Ridge High School diverted onto Dewa Drive was huge. I think that it is a safety concern. And then let's not take into consideration, when you pull off the highway, just the other day, I was headed to CrossFit and Monument and, or in Palmer Lake, and a small Prius got hit by a moving truck coming off of the highway onto County Line because it is such a huge safety concern coming off of the highway onto County Line. So I think this comes down to a couple of things, and I was present on the 28th meeting as well, so I apologize that I'm not there tonight. I think this comes down to a couple of things. I think that the water issue is probably the biggest. I'm not quite sure how the well that they dug here on Dewa and County Line impacts the water because that hasn't been mentioned at all. It's all about talking about the town of Monument or buying water, so I'm not quite sure what they tapped into there. But I also think it comes down to, there's the pure safety-ness of our town. And I recently posted a photo on Facebook from my balcony, from our, I'm sorry, our deck, of the sunset view from my patio, from my deck onto the mountains. And I think that we're forgetting what our town is supposed to be about. It's supposed to be about a small-town value and desires for what we have here. And I'm super, I'm super sad that we moved here just to be confronted with what we left in Highlands Ranch. So I really hope that, and again, I said this in the last meeting, I am not opposed to building of the land behind our property. But I am super opposed to the high-density housing. I think that that is not a positive. And then my other concern is, is that besides the crime and whatever that lady was speaking of, trash and whatnot, she, I've never experienced that here at Monument, mattresses and couches and whatnot, I've never experienced that. But I am super curious if the town of Monument, or if I have to go back to Woodmore and ask that a privacy fence be built up because literally we back up to the trail that they proposed, a trail next to our property then going on to the housing. If we can have a privacy fence that is now built against our property versus these other houses that are on smaller lots, because it is literally a direct impact to my home and my safety and protection of my family as far as, you know, just keeping it separate, if you will. So I, again, I'm not against building on the land, but I think that there, I agree with the, like, maybe taking a pause and seeing what happens with Jackson Creek Parkway, literally taking a pause and seeing what happens with our town as we expand and moving more cautiously towards the expansion of this land. And I thank you for your time tonight, fellows. I know it's going to be a long evening, but I appreciate your time. And please consider the residents who currently live here now.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Anderson, if you can move up the next person, please. Paul, would you like to make your comments? Unmute?
Thank you very much. My name's Paul Parag. I live at 1442 Dark Pine, which is in the High Mines Owners Association, about 1,500 feet away from the eastern edge of the development. I used to do land use stuff for NEPCO, so I'm kind of used to looking at these sort of things. What does general conformance mean in reference to the comprehensive plan? I agree with whoever said that general is in fact not in the code. I just looked that up. What percentage of meeting all criteria is in quote, general conformance? One of your planning commissioners and the rest of us do not think it meets it. How can you go from mixed-use and business campus to RA and say that's in general conformance? I'm all for reasonable development, but it's not reasonable when you change MU and DC to RA. How can you not say it detracts from the quality of life in the area such as traffic density, water and site views? And by the way, for your staffers, a mix of housing does mean mixed, doesn't mean one type of housing. The El Paso County and town and citizens want to view as you enter the Tri-Lakes area of a small-town community. In fact, there used to be in the old El Paso County master plan, something called a visual overlay. And so what, how do you look at it when the first thing you're going to see is a ton of multifamily attached duplexes and homes? As you drive through the canyon, they just created by their placement of these things on both sides of the highway. I live right at that corner, so it's gorgeous as you come in. Regarding density, another way to meet the water deficiency, by the way, is to reduce density. So if you're 25 acre feet short, you won't be if you reduce the density. One of the things I could not tell was whether on the east side, I-25, whether or not they had to get supplemental water from Woodmore Water. I didn't see that, so I apologize. I don't forget the tap fees and meter fees go for the town's expenditure in this area too, not just for the future loop. So the Tribeview is going to put a lot of money into it as well. Couple last things. What's the factual basis for needing more housing of this type right here and right now? People said that, but what's the factual basis? And then finally, don't forget with the metro district being created, they can fund any infrastructure they need for RS 20,000 or even large flat residential. Thank you very much. Thank you all for doing your work and good luck to you.
Thank you. All right, this will be the last one online for a bit while we go back to those in the room. Would you move up, Ms. Turner? All right, Mr.